Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Welcome to a council meeting slash budget presentation today. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the invocation and afterwards I'll ask Councilwoman Salyer, she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone in the chambers please stand?
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as citizens of Oklahoma City to reflect on what you have done through us, what you would like to do in the future. Give us wisdom as we look forward to next year, that decisions that we make, the questions that we ask would be in line with your will and that we would be able to continue to build a city that would provide quality for our people in Oklahoma City and be a beacon for those around the world as to how to run a city in a wholesome and a true way. Thank you for our mayor and our council and give us wisdom now as we go through our deliberations, which in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will call the meeting to order and then recess the council meeting and convene as the Finance Committee.
Mayor, thank you. It's a great pleasure that we have the opportunity to present our budget overview and three departmental presentations this morning. This is a long process and we will be spending three of the next five weeks in Finance Committee meetings going over various department presentations. This morning we're going to start out with Doug Dollar giving an overview, followed up with IT, the Police Department, and then the Fire Department. Doug?
Thank you very much. Glad to be here this morning. We'll start off again with just some of the big picture numbers that we talked about last week, taking a look at our staffing. We have, the proposed budget contains an increase of 71 positions in the current year. Today, Police, Fire, and IT will be presenting their budgets and so they'll talk about the positions that are included in their proposed budgets. As we look at the numbers, the proposed general fund budget's $426.5 million. The other operating funds add $230.7 million and the non-operating funds add another $590.9 million. So the overall proposed budget's $1,248 million for FY16. As we take a look at the revenue, again for that total picture there, taxes are the biggest area of revenue generation. They total $595 million or about 48 percent of the total. Sales taxes, of course, the largest source in that category and is over $435 million of the total. Just last Friday, we received the sales tax check for May and that was up 1.75 percent, which was very encouraging. We were afraid it may be close to zero or perhaps negative based on our recent forecast from Dr. Evans, so that was very positive news to get a good sales tax check here in May as we come towards the end of the fiscal year. Our fees and charges account for 14.2 percent of our overall total. Transfers in, those are from the various trusts for operating costs for water, wastewater, solid waste, airport services. They represent 7.1 percent. Federal grants are about 2.6 percent of the total at $26.4 million. And then fund balance represents the second largest revenue source at 26.6 percent or $333 million. As we mentioned last week, the MAPS three sales tax fund represents over half of that total at $184 million as the fund's been banking sales tax revenue for the last few years and now as many of the projects moving into construction, those funds are being spent. If we narrow in on the general fund revenue, again, the distribution is fairly similar with sales tax again being the biggest piece of the total at 52.5 percent or $224 million. Other taxes are 11.8 percent with the use tax being the largest piece there at 9 percent of our total. Franchise fees represent 10.5 percent. Those come from utility companies that pay us for their use of the rights away around the city. Fines total $27.3 million, that's 6.4 percent of the general fund. Fees and charges such as building permits, administrative charges, and the wage adjustment from prior police sales tax make up 16.8 percent total. And then our other revenues include transfers from other funds, interest, and several other miscellaneous revenues that represent 2 percent of our total. As we look at the expense side of the budget, again, looking at that big $1.2 billion picture, we use the categories here that are defined in the Municipal Budget Act. You can see that personal services is the largest portion of the budget at about 37 percent. By including the non-operating funds in this chart, you'll see that capital outlays and debt service are also a significant portion of the total at 31.6 percent for capital and 8.6 percent for debt. As we focus in again on the general fund, we look at this kind of another area we use is our by-service area and you can see public safety dominates our expenses in the general fund at 63.8 percent. General government comes in at 8.7 percent because all of the general government functions are located in the general fund. Public services is the second largest category at 17.9 percent. That includes public works, development services, planning. And finally, culture and recreation in the general fund, it comes in at just under 10 percent of our total. We showed this chart again last year, our increase in positions is 71 and you can see the increase that we've had since the recession. Overall, we're up 417 positions since 2011. 400, I'm sorry, 145 are uniformed police positions, 55 are uniformed firefighters, additional 25 civilian positions in police and fire, so 225 total positions in police and fire over that time period. And other departments that have seen significant increases include utilities with 32 additional positions, public works, I'm sorry, 46 in utilities, 32 in public works, and 23 in development services. So last week, one of the things that I mentioned as one of our budget highlights was our increase in health insurance. Our budget is going up about 6.4 percent per person, per budgeted employee, and I thought I'd spend just a few minutes to talk about that as there've been some questions during the council workshop and at other times from the council of how we come up with our average budget.
If you recall, there were some questions when we were in negotiations last year as how that number came forth and we discussed it earlier in February in our Budget Committee and we said we'd come back with some more specific explanations of that.
So in our benefits package, the city offers life, health, and dental coverage to employees, but the largest cost by far is health insurance. In fact, we often refer to our benefits package simply as the health insurance package just because it's such a big piece of the total. We offer two health insurance plans to our employees, an HMO plan through United Healthcare and our indemnity plan that's administered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Both plans offer various tiers of service depending on how many lives are covered such as employee only or employee and spouse. With the HMO, the city pays United Healthcare a set premium and they provide the insurance coverage. Under the indemnity plan, it's a self-funded plan and the city acts as the insurer and pays the claims. Because of this, actual claims may end up being higher or lower than the assessed premium equivalent rate. We use an actuary to set the rates for the indemnity plan to try to get as accurate a projection as possible for the coming year. One of the complications in estimating the cost is that our insurance plans run on a calendar year basis, so they run on January to December as opposed to our fiscal year calendar. So as we're looking to come up with our estimate for the FY16 budget per position for insurance, we do know what our current rates are in the current year for insurance. We know kind of a baseline of where our employees are enrolled and right now it's about 65 percent HMO, 35 percent indemnity. But then we've got to estimate several factors and one of those is what the premium increases are going to be for calendar year 2016. We work with the Personnel Department, our benefits office there, to look at medical inflation, the limits in the contract, our previous experience to try to come up with our estimates there for how much of the HMO and the indemnity plan are going to increase in the coming year. And then the other thing we look at is the number of employees who will take insurance and whether our enrollment patterns will change. So we assume the enrollment patterns are going to stay fairly consistent with that baseline distribution and we use the number of employees that are enrolled in that baseline distribution compared to our number of positions to come up with what we call a vacancy discount to, in essence, there's a certain number of people that aren't going to take our insurance or there are a certain number of positions that just aren't going to be filled at certain times of the year. So we come up with kind of a vacancy discount on that. And so then we come up with our estimated cost, we'll see that on the next slide here. Obviously, some of our employees don't take the insurance, so we have zero cost for them all the way up to nearly $20,000 for family coverage. And again, we have a distribution across all of these tiers of service with a number of employees in each of those categories. So when we put it all together, that's how we came up with our $12,305 per position. So again, it's per budgeted position. Our cost that we're going to pay per each employee is going to be different than that budget amount. Again, for some people, it's going to be zero because they don't take our insurance. For some, it's going to be that $20,000, but $12,305 has been, is what we say is the average, that's what we've calculated as the average cost for insurance. And for FY16, we've got 3,766 positions that are non-IAF, that are on our insurance plan. We estimate the cost for insurance for those positions to be at $46.3 million next year. When we include the payments to the Voluntary Employee Benefits Association, which is really the firefighter's insurance plan there, we're now up around $58 million as our total cost for insurance for FY16 that we've got estimated in there. And so that's kind of a quick overview of how we come up with the calculation. We can obviously talk about that more if you want some more detail, be happy to provide that to you. But that's kind of the end of my presentation then on the, on health insurance and our overview. Today, we've also got then IT, Police, and Fire to present their budget and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? All right, Doug, thank you.
Thanks. Chad, someone's going to come up and present our IT budget.
My name's Chad Meldrum, IT Director. While Police is getting ready, I'd like to start by introducing IT staff. First is David Grothie, he's the Assistant Director. Stacy Bone is Division Manager over the Applications Group. Kerry Wagner, Division over Public Safety Support. Ralph Gibson is over Infrastructure, which is a big part of security and all that. And then Felice Ponquilla runs Admin and helps put together this whole budget. So our budget is on page C137, if you want to turn to that page. So next slide, I'll start by leading for results. Our department mission, the mission of the Information Technology Department is to provide business solutions and technology services to city departments so they can better serve the Oklahoma City community. The screenshot you see there is the recently released citizen newsletter that we worked with PIM on, that was done by a development team working with PIM. This, citizens can go in and register for this newsletter and receive automatic updates. This is an improvement. It keeps PIM from having, not having to keep track of citizen emails and all that, so this has just been released in the last few weeks, so that's a success. We checked last night and there's over 6,600 people registered for that. A bulk of that, we did register all employee emails, so we're looking at about 1,800 people have registered that would be citizens, so this will continue to grow. Next slide. Again, on leading for results, strategic issues. First one, which really this can go in order of priority, system security and data integrity is one of our high priority items. It is an issue and a concern for us. Growing demand for technology services, realizing business off process improvements, which everything we buy and put in place, we want to make sure that that improves quality of what we're giving the citizens for efficiency, so that's one thing that we look at closely. Operational funding and resources, as we keep putting in all this technology, we want to make sure that we have the operational funding we need to maintain it long-term so we won't put something in that we don't plan long-term to maintain. And advanced skill sets, things and technologies, you know, even in your personal lives, keep getting more and more complicated, so this is both within the IT department and within departments using this technology. It becomes more and more skill required to utilize that. Some numbers, since July of 2014, last year, we've had 60 projects completed. When I say projects, of course, within IT, we're doing incidents and smaller requests and things like that. These would be the bigger projects that departments want. So 60 have been completed, but in that time, we've had 80 new projects. So demand for technology is outpacing our ability to meet that demand from a project standpoint. We have 74 projects currently in progress, which is quite a bit for the size of our department. Right now, there's about 206 projects to be completed on the books, so that's what departments are waiting for out there. For the most part, they're, they're okay with waiting, but some projects have been on the books for several years, so the quicker we can get to those, the better. Breakdown by line of business, just for reference, you can see, that's what the chart shows there. Within infrastructure, all the replacements we have to do of technology, that's where we're going to have a lot of major projects. Enhancements is another area, staff size-wise, they're one of our smaller areas, but we have lots of projects waiting for the enhancements division. That's where they're mostly putting in new technology. Next slide. So overview of our FY16 proposed budget is just over $25.5 million for the IT department. Breakdown of what this looks like by line of business. Our biggest one would be technology infrastructure, of course, that's going to be high with all the servers and network and items like that that have to be replaced and maintained within that line of business. Second there is public safety support, just over $7 million. Application support, 3.8, and then enhancements at 1.6. Most of that is staff time within there and staff salaries. Customer support and then administration at 4.2 million. Within administration, that looks high, but about just over 18 percent of that is for actual salaries within administration. And of course, anything that's not directly aligned with the line of business will fall in administration, so this is where we have our contingency planning, we have, we have a transfer for CIP and then a chargeback from other departments to IT for service. That totals 77 percent of that 4.2 million, so that's why that looks high. Next slide. So being an internal service department, we have to charge back our budget to the other departments by service provided. So this pie chart shows who gets what from a dollar standpoint of IT service. So between Police, Fire, and Courts, you can see that that's 54 percent of all of our, our chargeback from a dollar standpoint goes to public safety functions. That's up 1 percent from last year, so this has been fairly consistent year to year of that, that amount. You can see between utilities and public works, that really makes up three quarters of our entire chargeback budget, so, and then the other departments after that. So again, more than fif, more than half of our budget is for public safety functions. Next slide. Major changes for FY16, we're proposing to add one position to Development Program. This is not Development Services, this is Development within our, our own department. This is where they make custom applications, they make interfaces. This is where we do look at, do we need to buy or is it so specialized, we want to develop something in-house? When we develop something in-house, this is the program that'll do it. We have four positions within there right now, this will bring that total to five positions. Technology training in FY16 through the LFR process that we did in the fall was eliminated as a program altogether. That doesn't mean we're not going to do technology training. What we have found is within each program, say Enterprise Program for PeopleSoft or some of the application groups, they're doing a lot of training there. So within LFR, we moved that function within each program and eliminated training program. For this year, this is down, last couple of years, the required increase for maintenance technology has been really high. I think last year was at 7 percent, this year it's at 2.76 percent. So this year, we didn't have a lot of operational increase for what we already have in place right now. Next slide. Our department structure, so this added position will bring us to 103 positions total. Of course, we have Administration, but under that, we have three lines of business. I'll note that the four, customer support, application support, technology enhancement, and infrastructure have always been in place when we started LFR. Years ago, we added public safety support and broke out those programs, realizing that what they do for public safety support is specialized and we wanted within LFR to measure that individually. So we have five lines of business now. Within those five lines of business is 14 individual programs, which, under technology enhancement, you'll see the red number identifies in Development Services, which again, that's our, our Development Program, identifies as one position we're adding to bring that team to five total positions. One thing I'll note on this also is this 103 positions, we did have a significant cut in IT positions during the recession. We actually cut 12 positions that year, that one year, so that was a significant cut for IT. So this 103 brings us just two positions above where we were a decade ago, so we're just now getting back to that level. Next slide. Now I'll go through the lines of business individually and talk about them. Customer support, line of business, they provide single point of contact for customer technical support needs and rapid restoration, normal services. This is a critical line of business because this is where if our customers within departments are having an issue, they will call these guys first. And these guys will be essentially a liaison between the customer and the department and the people within the IT department that can help to resolve some of those issues. So the 4,000 work requests that they'll complete, and this is a LFR measure that we are entering and that's estimate to the end of this year, those are critical work requests because all the work that can get done here within customer support is taking load off some of the other programs and relieves them to be able to do some of the projects we talked about. They have direct management of 1,500 computing devices, there's many more than that in use in the city, but some of those are managed directly by departments, but this program is managing 1,500 computing devices. There's 1,100 cell phones and 1,300 cellular data modems. That sounds like a lot of data modems, but what we're seeing, remember, we put the, all the traffic signals, there's about 760-plus traffic signals we put on LTE devices to be able to talk to all those. And then we're seeing increasing, parks is using some of these data modems to activate some of the irrigation systems around the city. And we're, the rates we're paying for those is fairly low. We're getting really low data rates for the amount of data those things are sending, so this is a definitely economical way to go through and control stuff on a city this size of 620 square miles. LFR measure there that I wanted to highlight was the customer satisfaction with timeliness and quality of services, so that's an important measure for this group. They, they report on the entire IT department, they just, don't just report on customer support, this is a number for the entire department, that's running at 95 percent. So when we do stuff for departments, they get a feedback and they respond to it. This number's based on 1,500 responses, so there, there's quite a few responses going to this, but we're seeing good, good responses on timeliness and quality. Next. Next line of business is technology application support. They provide enterprise application support services, including patches, upgrades, enhancements, customizations, training, troubleshooting, and vendor management. So we're talking about critical city systems that have to be maintained by this group. Examples of some of the bigger systems they maintain is a PeopleSoft, HR, and Financials Enterprise System, that's one of the biggie systems we maintain. Cronos Timekeeping and Cashiering Systems, Risk Management. We also do some SAP support for utilities in, in helping to maintain that system. The Electronic Bidding System, Service Call and Work Order Systems, Permits, Code Enforcement, Animal Welfare, Fleet and Fuel Management, Agenda Management, Document Management, and GIS Systems, this is some of what they maintain. So important functions and this group really is customer-facing for the department side. So looking at LFR performance measures, again, customer satisfaction with timeliness and quality of services for this year FY15. Departmental Systems is at 98 percent, which is excellent. Enterprise Business Applications is at 97 percent and GIS is at 95 percent. So we're seeing what these, these programs are doing for the departments, they're, they're definitely satisfied. Percent, another LFR measure we look at closely is percent of customer incidents resolved in four operational hours. The four operational hours came from ICMA, that's where we set that benchmark and that's where the four hours came from. So Departmental Systems is at 98 percent. I'll highlight there that that is a, that's an increase of 20 percent over the last two years, so this is an area where we added position a couple of years ago and I think we're seeing within the LFR numbers, some response from the customers on, on satisfaction. Enterprise Business Applications is at 91 percent, so they're doing some of the PeopleSoft stuff, so resolving stuff quickly is important for that. That number also is up, that's up 24 percent. That team does an excellent job responding. Some of that, the dip we might have had a couple of years ago, this is year-over-year 24 percent increase. When you do PeopleSoft upgrades, sometimes it takes longer to resolve, so we definitely seen LFR numbers that reflected. So now that we're not doing an upgrade this year, this is kind of indicative of how quickly this team is responding to customer needs. Next slide. Some project highlights from the Application Support Group. This is some stuff we're working on right now, some stuff for next year. We want to highlight that we continue to expand field computing to enterprise applications. This is non-public safety, so these are, these are code enforcement, some of the animal welfare and those guys, which you can see screenshots there. So we're about to reach 250 devices in the field. We're using LTE and we have these set up so that we're in the, when they are in the field, they're able to do everything just as if they're at their desktop here downtown. So that's important to have these users where they can get away from paper. So a lot of these, a lot of these people had desktops here, had to work on paper out in the field, now they're actually able to work electronically out in the field, so definitely some efficiencies gained there. We're about to put 38 devices for code enforcement, working with Development Services on that, so that's, that's imminent, those are coming in, that's happening right now, so that'll be a big improvement in their efficiency. We're also going to look at printing in the field for those guys, so they will continue to write handwritten citations. We're looking at maybe printing those out this next year and they, rather than having to handwrite citations, they'll be able to do printing, so that's one, one thing we look to accomplish this next year. Another one I wanted to highlight was Agenda Management major upgrade. This has been some trouble for IT in that we have the sire system and sire is a company, companies are acquiring companies, especially in technology, all the time. Sire got acquired by another company and what happened to us was we ended up stuck on an old version and not able to do upgrades. The company had bought them out, wasn't clear about what their plans were, so we went through, talked to, we talked to our customer department, said that we need to do another RFP, do we need to look at switching? So we're holding the line and finally, this new company that, that bought sire is looking at upgrading. The impacts of this so far has been what you see on OKC.gov and citizen searches and access to some of these online agendas is not, not kept up with the technology, so we've had some complaints to IT and, you know, even, even maintaining browsers within the city has been a challenge for us. So this year, finally, starting in the fall, we'll do a major upgrade with the new sire and Agenda Management System and hope to see some significant improvements there. Next.
Chad, can I just, is that a system that's used by lots of other cities and, I mean, is sire?
I haven't been to the conference, but I do know lots of cities use it.
Well, just a little background, sire, the company that was purchased, a lot of their employees are now with the new company, so that's real reassuring. But yes, sire sold to many municipalities and county governments also on, for Agenda Management. Now, on base, this is their first try at an Agenda Management Program, but like I said, because they have the sire employees who built the old one, we, we are confident that this is going to work and actually work much better.
We wouldn't be the only ones putting pressure on them to make sure they update and give us.
All, all the sire users are looking for a new solution.
One thing I, I will note that I've, I've heard from Francis is we, from a sire standpoint, we were almost a power user of sire. We made so many customizations and workflows, which is really great because it made things more efficient, but because of all that, it made it difficult to upgrade, so where some of the other sire customers didn't do all that, were able to upgrade, but that is one of the reasons that we were stuck because we, with all this efficiency and customizations, it made us stuck on the version that we were on, so. But yeah, this fall, we look at, we're, we're actually working with them right now and hope to kick this off in the fall and it should see better, better presentation on OKC.gov and maybe some better tablet integration, some things I know citizens have been asking for and even within the city, people have been asking for. The next line of business is technology enhancements. They provide new technology identification, business analysis, custom application development, data management, project management, implementation services to city departments. So this is a critical function within the IT department. For our development team, they've developed 45 custom applications, which is really good, but one thing we're finding is, is those get developed, they have to continue to maintain them, they have to continue to upgrade them, and then they are doing some of the direct user support, so as they develop those, they have less time available for new development. There's 329 production databases, which continues to grow, and again, this is the line of business where we're adding the System Analyst One. LFR, we added a couple of years ago, a measure to show how much work is waiting on, the departments are waiting on to be done, which we call projects and backlog. Development Program has 43. So this is again where we're adding, we had four people within that program, so we're going to go to five. The 43, they're averaging nine completions per year. So you could see the 43, it was, they're looking at more than four years to complete what they have on the books now. Project Management has 42, and Data Management has 45. So there's a lot still waiting on this enhancements division to be done. The screenshot there is something that's been developed, working with finance, and that's a budget management application, which we added LFR to. So this allows departments to prepare and submit their budget in a much more efficient way than the way it was in the past. And then with LFR, through the same application, they built in the LFR reporting. So now departments can go through this custom application, completely written in-house, and submit all their LFR numbers and manage that, manage targets and everything. So definitely some efficiency gains there. Next slide. Project highlights for technology enhancements this next year and already starting, we're working on the OKC.gov redesign with PIM. So that'll be a big one. We, this is, we've contracted with outside vendor to help redesign OKC.gov, get it down to something that we can maintain with the staff we have, and get better services out there for citizens and access to information. I already highlighted Citizen Electronic Newsletter that we worked on with PIM. Continuing with SharePoint and Document Management, we're seeing more and more departments that are putting stuff in SharePoint, which is an improvement for them. Number one, it keeps documents potentially that might get destroyed. Now we have electronic copies of them, so we're working with departments to get those scanned, but there's, and able to find information, you can easily go through SharePoint and search. So across the board, departments, airports, personnel, everybody's putting more and more stuff in SharePoint. The one, one bottleneck we have here is we really have one person within IT working on this. So this is where, an area where we're definitely strained for resources. But Matt Jensen, a couple of years ago, received, was the Qantas Employee of the Month for working on some of this. So that came directly from the department, some of the work he does with them, training and helping them get documents within SharePoint. Electronic Plan Review is something that's been out there for years, and that's integrated with a Cell. That's something we'll look at doing this next year. They finally have some stable products integrated with that, and so we hope that'll improve efficiency on how electronic plans are reviewed. Step one will be to do it within the, within the department in reviewing electronic plans. The second step will be to where citizens and people bringing in plans will be able to do that online, so that'll be a second phase of that project.
And what system is a Cell? A Cell does what?
A Cell is our permit system, and we're also using it for code enforcement. So, and then we, we just, last year, implemented that within Action Center. So there's a system across the board that is a multi-function system. Electronic Ticketing Distribution System is one we're working on with Civic Center. So that is going out, we're going to reissue the RFP on that and work with resident groups to look at getting a new ticketing system in for them. That's a high priority for the Parks Department. The Data Portal is one we want to highlight that we worked with PIM on again. This is at data.OKC.gov, and you can see the screenshot there. So there's online maps, there's data download, and then there's a web developer API, which there are people out there that, when you're talking about the traffic accidents, we used to, we present the online map. Now with the web developer API, people can get to that data and integrate it in. So whether it's some of the news agencies or whatever, they'll have access to be able to get live data through the web developer API. So that's something that just came out in the last couple of weeks, and we're seeing definitely good feedback on that. Next slide. Public Safety Support Line of Business, again, this is a couple of years ago, we broke this out to its own line of business because of the criticality and the unique nature of what this program or this line of business is supporting. They provide public safety application, systems, communications, and 911 facility management for the city. So of course, there's many, many critical public safety applications that we have to respond to 24/7 to make sure that are up and running. The Emergency 911 On-Side Dedicated Support, again, the 911 center, we are responsible for that, from the generator to the furniture within there, the, we have projects to replace carpeting and paint walls. So we're responsible for that center and have that within the IT budget. We also, we have staff dedicated to onsite support, meaning they're walking the floor over there, making sure that if there's any needs, they don't have to call customer support, they have a direct person right there to help with their needs. There's 182 outdoor warning sirens that are being maintained. There's about 786 vehicle-mounted mobile data computers. That's important because within our, within our radio shop, we have a staff of 11 people, and all they do is, is mount computers, and they're even, as far as police cars, are putting the sirens or the light bars on the top and everything. So they're fully equipping these vehicles that are out there. And it's not just public safety, other, you know, if it's airports vehicles, there's people coming through there to get radio support and things installed vehicles. So you can see there to the left, that's them outfitting when the new police cars were coming in and trying to fit all this stuff within the new police vehicles. So there's a lot of stuff that has to go in there. There's 4,800 user radios, and that's just within the city. What I wanted to highlight is, for reference, also on the city radio system is the other cities, including Bethany, Yukon, War Acres, Mustang, Putnam City Schools, and this year, Oklahoma City Community College came on the radio system. So with the size of Oklahoma City and the coverage with the radio system, it's better for them to come on our system. Of course, they, they do pay a user fee, and they purchase their own radios, so this is a benefit to the city because we can, we can talk to them directly. So LFR, again, customer satisfaction with timeliness and quality of services directly for this program. Public Safety Communications is running at almost 99%. So people that are going through and getting service are satisfied with the service they're getting. And part of this too will be with the switch we did years ago, switching LTE and some of those communications, I think some of that is reflected in here, because as they drive around the city, they're able to use their applications like, like they need to. Next slide. Public Safety Support Project Highlights This Next Year. We're right now in process of the electronic citation hardware and software, so that's where, that's an added component for public safety to do electronic citations. So that'll be primarily for parking enforcement, the motorcycle, police enforcement, and then some uniform patrol. So we plan budget-wise to do 150 initially, and then we'll expand that depending on the success of that and feedback. Technical support for body-worn cameras, that's being run within the police department, but there's going to be a tremendous amount of data to store and a tremendous amount of data to move around. So we're involved in that to see, can some of this data be, videos be uploaded from the vehicles in the field? Can some of the software where items have to be tagged within the videos be done straight from the police vehicle, or do they have to come back in the office? So it's really, from a data standpoint, how this gets moved around, we're involved in looking at that. The radio system upgrade, RFP will be coming out this year. This is where we have the TUSA consultant working on this. We're still waiting on their Phase One final report, which will identify what needs to be done, some budget numbers. We know that already in some of the drafts of budget numbers they sent to us is consistent with what we've been saying in our five-year forecast, so that's a good thing, but we, we need to kick off the RFP, and this will give us some more information on, on design and who will bid, and even some funding options with that. Phase One Police RMS and Courts RMS, we hope to go live this year, and then replace the 911 equipment, software, and prepare OKC for next-generation 911. So that's happening right now at PSCC. I know this is the text to 911, there'll be some capability with that. I'm told things have to happen at the state level before this can actually, we can receive some of those texts to 911, but we'll be prepared for it and have the stuff in place when that happens. Next. Technology Infrastructure, this is the behind-the-scenes, these, there's not a whole lot of customer-facing stuff that happens, but there's a lot of really neat things that happen from an IT standpoint for us. They provide security, network server, telecommunications, and client configuration services to IT departments. Again, security is something that we don't talk a lot about, security projects or brag about, security, you know, what, what we do, or you know, how, how good the security is, but it's, so we like to say with security, it's a high priority, but we maintain a low profile when it comes to security. But we've found increasingly, departments are more and more on board of working with us. It only takes a virus here and there to get people on board with, okay, security is a priority with us. 845 network infrastructure devices, and there's almost 12,000 network connections that have to be maintained over 160 sites. So significant network infrastructure. It's 55, almost 5,600 telecommunication devices, and there's five call centers have to be managed. 612 servers is what we're up to now. Looking back five years, that's about a, annually, that's about a 13% increase, so servers continue to expand. And I'll note there that that expansion has happened with little to no increase in staff. And so, you know, how can we do that? We're up to 70, 72% of our server is virtualized, which it makes it easier to maintain this and more efficient. So that's how we're able to maintain 612 servers, but definitely a resource crunch there of trying to maintain all this. And there's 1,400 terabytes of storage, looking at the numbers, that's a 47% increase from last year. So what is that? We're seeing SAP, there were significant changes in storage, and we know that's going to keep going up. You know, if we do body-worn cameras, some more of the document management storage, that this will keep increasing. We do keep an eye on cloud technologies and, and costs. It's still much cheaper to do stuff locally, but we do, we do look at cloud storage, some options there, to keep costs in mind of how to do all this. This next year also, and imminent, is the bidding for the new primary data center and getting that project going. That'll be a $2.6 million project to build a new data center. One of the advantages of that is, we'll be able to build this as the lights out, it'll be able to run at higher temperatures. So we're looking at some definitely energy savings there and how that's run, and much more capable of, for disasters, tornadoes, of withstanding something that might come through and not impacting the city operations. There's 463 CCTV cameras, that's 120 increase from just last year. I'll note too, that as of LFR this month, and it, this is actually good timing, they got 455 of those up, which means only eight are down right now and not reporting to servers, that's 98%. See there? And that's LFR measure report, so percent of CCTV cameras operational is at 98%. The other LFR measure, which we watch closely, is percent of client devices meeting current security standards. That's reported LFR at 87%, and they report that up to the current month. So that's 3,800 client devices that have to be managed. A couple of years ago, we went ahead and added in the police MDCs. We're actually able now with LTE to push out updates to all the MDCs. So this is, this is all the client devices out there are managing. We definitely want that to be 100, that would be the target of meeting security standards. But the important thing is, we're, we're getting higher and higher and able to remotely manage these things. And again, that's with very little staff, sending out all these patches and making sure they're patched to the level we need them patched at. Next. And that's it. Any questions?
Just want to point out that I, I think hopefully you, you got a flavor for the breadth of the, of the number of systems that we have across the organization. Every department has something from as, as a small system like scheduling the rec centers in the Parks Department, to major systems like our, our enterprise system and our utility billing system and our, our police systems and, and the maintaining controls of monitoring our traffic signals, we have, I don't know how many systems, but there are so many and so different throughout the organization. It's a huge effort, and their staff is actually fairly meagerly-staffed, and they do an excellent job with the resources that they have. I'm constantly amazed at what they're able to accomplish with the limited resources that they have. And you know, he, he mentioned the security, that we're constantly attacked from outside security, and we don't like to talk about it. It's kind of like in the fourth quarter of Thunder Game, and you're thinking to yourself, I don't think KD's missed a free throw all night. Well, you don't say that. You might think it, but you don't say it, because you'll know you'll jinx it, and you'll miss the next one. And, but they've done a wonderful job as, as far as fending off the attacks on the system. Thank you for your work, Chad.
Thank you.
Just a comment, you know, because it is such a broad system, and it touches so many departments, and the threat for security issues continues to grow. Any possibility that there's some federal fundings that we could look towards as far as, you know, related to internet or your system security systems? Or if, if not funding, then perhaps assistance from some of the federal agencies to at least come in and do checks on our systems?
We do work right now with the FBI. When something happens, we will pass information to them, so, and we, we talk to them fairly regularly. They're interested in some of the stuff, especially recently that's happened, and they go, we know one of the people got arrested recently, so possibly some of the information we pass to them. So we do, and we have working groups involving Devon and some others in the area, and OU, and you know, they experienced an attack recently, so we are reaching out and communicating. As far as funding, we'd have to research and see what's available for...
We, I don't believe we've received any federal funding in that area, and I'm really not aware of any that's available.
We did have a situation where all of our systems crashed with, I guess, an attack somehow or overloading, I don't know what the description of that was. Can you share just a little teeny bit about that and what we're doing to prevent that from happening again?
Well, the, what happened, and time, time for me, some things a year ago seemed like they're three years, and some things a month ago seemed like they were last week, so I'd lose track of time. But it seems like in the last couple of months, we had the DDoS attack, and it, there were some, some notification that they were going to do it, and, and things like that, and bragged about it, and it, you know, that's the stuff we worked with the FBI on. But a DDoS attack essentially is nothing internally went down, they just, we, we have a, our internet pipe, we pay for what we need, so we, we size it right, we wouldn't oversize it, so we have all this bandwidth that we're paying for we don't need. So because it was sized right, it's easy for somebody from the outside to flood that pipe. That's essentially what happened. So when, when they were flooding the pipe, and you know, there's ways to do this that people who like to do, I think it's really fun, but you know, they, they control thousands of computers potentially and all at one time, send requests to OKC.gov, and so it can't respond to all this, and the pipe gets flooded, and then legitimate requests from citizens can't come through. So that's essentially what happened. We, we don't know why they picked Oklahoma City. We know, you know, they involve more, and then they attacked OU, but they were attacking Colorado, and Atlanta, and Seattle, so it was the same group that went on bragging about. They brought Maine down for quite a while, I think. But you know, our response was, our guys jumped right on it, and you know, we, we did some stuff to go ahead and block some international addresses, some things like that, and you know, talking to our service provider, some things they could help with us, but it even, it even bottlenecked the service provider that provides that pipe to us, so it was pretty significant. Since then, and we, we quite ironically had this as a budget item we wanted for next year and said, something like this could happen, and then a week later, you know, after presenting it, it did happen, so we...
Slightly suspicious.
Yeah, yeah. I had to say, I didn't, we, we didn't do this to get funding, but, so anyway, we've contracted for a DDoS service, and that's what they do. They, they have mechanisms that they can watch for these types of attacks, and then mechanisms where they can try to tell what's legitimate. It's, you know, it's fairly easy to write something that can tell if it's a, if it's a user clicking through the site that happens every now and then versus something that's just, you know, constantly going after something from a certain IP address, so. And then security-wise, we're constantly looking at things happening. It just, it keeps getting more and more of a challenge of things coming out. But we go to the conferences and look at what's out there and try to position the city economically, you know, to do what we need to do to make sure that things stay maintained up and, and not lose any data integrity or, or anything like that.
You've all done a great job.
Thank you.
Tell me again, when do you expect the revisions to the website to be completed, and what we're doing to change it?
I don't, I don't have the timeframe. I know they were meeting with the vendor, they did the kickoff a couple of months ago. I have to get with, with PIM and, and our staff and see what their timeframe is now, but I think it'll be the better part of this year before they have it up. But they're going through a process right now, they may not have an exact timeframe because they're meeting with individual departments, Public Works and all them, and trying to see what kind of stuff they want in there. And so they're still really kind of scoping what, what they want to do, what information they want out there, you know, how they want it designed and everything, and then I think after that, they'll, they'll nail down the schedule for sure. But this is happening, this has been going on for two months, two, three months now already with the, the kickoffs and starting the meetings, so.
Councilman, we'd be happy to get your schedule on that, we'll, we'll follow up.
Zach.
Zach, can you answer questions on the website?
Yes, sir. Councilman, actually having focus groups today with, with neighborhood residents and, and citizens to get feedback. We're looking at the end of the year, early 2016 for completion on that.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Next up is the Police Department, it's Chief Cities coming forward. I think it's, I, I know I reflect back when we have weather instances like we've had in the last week, and I'm, we can't do anything about the weather, but, but I'm reassured about our response, and the Police Department, the Fire Department do a wonderful job, partly because I've had a little bit of experience in it, but partly just because they're good professionals. had a little bit of experience in it, but partly just because they're good professionals and have the resources they need, and they know how to respond. So thank you for your efforts over the weekend, and the same to you, Chief Bryant, wherever he is.
He's probably watching back near MTC's office, but yeah, thank you very much. Great staff, like I say, we have a lot of, a lot of practical experience, we have a lot, we train a lot, we have a lot of practical experience, we have a lot of support, obviously, with the equipment from council, and, and from our citizens, so it's, it's a, it's a neighborhood process of making things like that work successfully, so we have a lot of good partners. I want to first introduce my staff, I had, sitting here, working the, working the slideshow here is Lieutenant Dan Stewart, he works in our planning and research, he's worked on this project. Chief Ken McDonald also has, has worked on it, and then I assume you all know Mike Strup, my new business manager, who started in January. Renee, my business manager, Renee Saka, who also worked on this very hard, is retiring in July, and after years and years of just wonderful service, and she's probably watching, and I couldn't say enough great things about her, how she's managed a very, very huge budget, has a lot of institutional knowledge that we'll miss, and she's been trying to pass a lot, a lot of that on to Mike over the last, since January, and so we're going to miss her a great deal, but we're looking forward to working with Mike. So he's been here, he's worked on this, and, and so Renee's kind of turned it over to Mike. So anyway, I appreciate you being able to present that, this this morning. We'll start with our proposed budget for '16. Well, we can go back to the mission statement, it's, the mission statement didn't change this year, the mission of the Police Department is to provide public safety services that promote a safe environment and lessen the fear of crime to the Oklahoma City community, so that they can experience an enhanced quality of life. Our budget for, our proposed budget for this year, you can see that our, our operating total budget is a hundred and eighty-six million. This is, does not include capital and non-operating, which is thirty-three, and then some of our transfers from sales, sales tax, or from general, from sales tax to general fund, which equals a total budget of two-hundred-and-seven million this year. This just kind of gives you a pie chart overview of that, where you see where our general fund makes up the large majority of what we have to operate on, which is sixty-two percent. Public, police sales tax is at twenty-three percent, and then you can see the other smaller percentages that make up, mark up our budget to operate over, over a year. We'll go into our first issue, LFR, our first issue, the demand for police presence and services, this hasn't changed much over the year, but it's still very, very relevant. The growing demand for police presence and services coupled with the increasing scope and complexity of police investigations, if not adequately addressed, will result in slower police response times, increased crime rate, the reduced percentage of crimes solved, decreased citizen satisfaction with our services, and then the decreased traffic enforcement. Obviously, all those are still relevant and at the core of what we do every day. Some of the strategies in dealing with, with that issue is to continue the use of overtime programs to address high crime areas, increase traffic enforcement citywide, and increase personnel and investigations operations in community-based programs, which obviously the council has chosen to do over the last three years, and has, we're going to see big dividends to that, and already have. Results, and how we're measuring these types of things, the survey the city, the city puts out, basically asks citizens, do they feel safe citywide? You can see in 2013, we were at fifty-eight percent, in '14 it dropped to fifty-one percent. And the target each year that we've had, since we started this, was fifty-five percent. We kind of, we, we benchmark those surveys at fifty-five percent since 2005, which that, that shows what our satisfaction rate was back then. If you look at it nationally and compare it, if you, you know, if you've seen those, we're, we're really doing pretty well compared to, to other cities our size. Satisfied or very satisfied with the quality of police service, 2014 was sixty-nine percent, pretty much has stayed the same. Our target is seventy-two percent, which again, is what it was back in 2005. Continuing measuring our results, the percentage of our priority one calls responded to within nine minutes and thirty seconds, that was set and discussed during our staffing study, if you can remember, back in 2009 and '10, when we presented that to council. Physical year to date is, is, we're at seventy-two point two percent. In other words, we're answering, we're answering our high priority calls, this is life-threatening calls, we respond to those seventy-two, over seventy-two percent of the time, in nine minutes and thirty seconds. We want to reach a target of eighty percent, we had originally during the study said at ninety, I think that's just going to, after years and years of looking at this, that's just going to be a little bit too high, I don't think that's going to be obtainable, but eighty percent is much more reasonable, so we've lowered it this year, since, since we, since we've been doing this. You can look at our investigative clearance rates, you're going, you're going to look at both person crimes, the first, first one is person crimes, you can see where that, the national average is forty-eight point one percent, and Oklahoma City, we are at fifty-four percent. Now, the national average includes smaller municipalities, really a better gauge is, is comparing us to municipalities that are more our size, and dealing with some of the same crime issues that, that we deal with. So if you look at cities, for instance, compared to our size, just if you want to pull out, say, a category, let's, let's say homicides, for instance, Oklahoma City's clearance rate in 2014 was actually sixty-nine percent, and cities our size were fifty-seven percent. So we're doing considerably better in most of these categories in solving these crimes, and a lot of, then most municipalities are similar size or greater. Again, the national average for homicides is sixty-four percent, so we're doing five percent better than national average. I just say that to give you a comparison, because, because we actually are, are higher, much higher than that forty-eight percent. And when you look at investigations for property crimes, you see on the national average at nineteen percent, we're lower than that fifteen percent. But if, but if you were to compare us in burglary, or burglaries, for instance, our clearance rate on burglaries is nine, is nine percent, and on the national, the city our size is, it's nine point five percent, so we're just a half a percent below, below that. Larcenies, for instance, were eighteen percent, and cities our size are fifteen point nine percent. So even though we show that we're lower there, if you compare us to cities, which is a better comparison, we're actually, we're actually higher and doing a better job of clearing our crimes than most, most other cities that we would compare ourselves with. And then you can see on the right-hand column, in our LFR, because the UCR does not measure all, all, all crimes, the, the lower larcenies, petty larcenies, those types of things are not captured in the national UCR, but we do want to capture those overall, because we still investigate those, and we want to see how well we're doing. So we compare, we compare those averages to ourselves each year, and you can see where the fiscal year-to-date average, sorry, actual, is seventy percent, and our target actually was set at sixty-eight percent, so we're doing pretty well so far. Property crimes, it's thirty percent, and, and our target is twenty-seven percent, so we're actually, we're, we're doing a lot better. And they're always, those percentages are higher than, than the UCR over all crimes that we investigate. The second issue we're going to talk about is violent crime, always an issue, probably always will be an issue, it's an issue nationally, it, it goes up and down, it's, it went down for a while nationally, while we were up, and right now it's going up nationally in many, in many municipalities our size, where in fact, the last several years, we've actually reduced the violent crime rate. Continue, to continue training violent crimes, if not accurately addressed, obviously we'll increase, increase our numbers of assaults and homicides, and we see an increase in gang violence, if we don't address it, increased demand on public safety services, and an overall decrease in feeling of safety for our public by that. There's just so many, the next, the next slide here shows our strategies for dealing with violent crime, we have quite a few strategies. You know, you increase, obviously, police presence and enforcement in strategic areas using overtime initiatives, we have a number of overtime initiatives, one of them I want to specifically note is, some of the targeted areas in violent crime, that was over the last couple of years, and using overtime has been a result of you adding positions, even though we may not be able to get those positions filled, the, you know, the, the funding is in our budget, and we're using that funding, that, that balance to actually pay overtime, to actually put more officers in the field. So essentially, by doing what, what you've done over the last several years, we're still immediately putting more officers in the field, specifically in high crime areas, and we've, and we've seen some dividends from that, obviously, in, in the lowering of the crime rates, violent crime, and one thing that's been, and one thing that's been very, very interesting, is we've had an extreme reduction in property crimes. So some of those efforts in those high, violent crime areas, obviously some of those same individuals that we're dealing with, we're also lowering property crimes in those areas of city, actually, the percentages are greater than the violent crime reductions. Overtime, that, we have an anti-gang overtime in, in these high, in high gang areas, we also add more officers during the summertime from some of the divisions to create extra enforcement. Again, we have the program with the overtime officers from the funding that you provide us for additional officers over the years, we haven't been, we haven't been able to get filled immediately. We have our Safe Oklahoma Grant, which we have at, at an area between Northwest Twenty-seventh and Melrose and Meridian and council, that we've, we've received funding for for the last several years, we just received additional funding from the state to continue those programs, part of that is paying overtime. We've run into some really incredible challenges, and one of the challenges in, in that small district, we have, we have about forty-two apartment complexes, we have apartment complexes, and we're working really, really hard and trying to come up with some, some new things, and actually, we're hiring one non-sworn person to try to coordinate efforts with apartment complexes, to clean up complexes in that area in an attempt, because some of that's driving the crime rate in that area. But we've gotten really positive feedback from the residents and some of the apartment complexes, and, and so it's, we've been, statistically, we've been doing a good enough job where the state has, has provided us with additional funding for another year. We also want to continue efforts to reduce crime through community-based programs, we have a number of programs that are working with the schools, working with the community for, on prevention, and those types of initiatives, we have our FACT program, our school resource officers, our bilingual units, Triad working with our seniors, I'm going to, we're going to start a cadet officer program that I'm going to talk to you about here, I'm going to highlight that, because I'm pretty excited about it. Police Athletic League has done a tremendous job moving into the school system and providing programs for, for our students, and the schools have really been working closely with us, and especially with the new, new gyms going in the elementary schools, the gyms are being built from the maps, from, from Maps for Kids, really gives them a great, great venue to work with these kids, and, and try to build, they also build in character-type programs with sports and athletics and work with the teachers, so. PAL's growing, we've got so much community support, that's a nonprofit board set up for that, it's probably one of the best PAL programs, I think, in the country, so we're pretty proud of that. Our PCR officers are out in the community, truancy unit is still reducing truancy in the schools, you know, we have officers that are dedicated to that, that work with the public school system, of all the kids that they, they make contact with, the thousands of kids that are truant, that we've, we've reduced that over fifty-two, truancy over fifty-two percent among the students that we've worked with. And we've also reduced the number of parents that have been taken to district court as a result of ten or more absences, which is state law. So the, the numbers look good, we've had this program since we started with the COPS grant that we're fully funding now, the school's looking at taking more of, of an in-house role in, in working on the truancy issue and working with us, so we've been working with them on that. So it's a, it's a great partnership with the schools, and we think we're making, making, having a lot of impact. Our victim assistance program is, is, is just taken off, and we've really, we've really done a lot to work with victims. So we've always worked with domestic violence victims, working with the YWCA, because we have an advocate there, and it's been a tremendous program, but we now are working with all victims of all other crimes also, and it's, it's been a good program. So, I mean, those are some of the things, and then we talk about recruitment, hiring and training of new officers, recruiting is, 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 has always been somewhat of a challenge, but we've been pretty successful here, we think we're going to, we think we're going to see so, a little tougher times in recruiting, just, just based on the environment that we have nationally that's going on, that's also, it's affecting all departments. Even though we're not having some of the, the specific problems here, it affects all departments in the image of law enforcement, and so departments across the country are seeing some challenges and changes, and I, and I think we're kind of sort of starting to see that also, especially in dealing with minority recruitment, and, and trying to attract those individuals. Currently, we have a class of forty-seven, we graduated the last class, which was Class One Thirty-Two, if you remember, that's the class, once they got out of our field training program, is starting our Saturday to Saturday. So as of April, we've started our first Saturday to Saturday, the first Saturday to Saturday shift from two to, to, two to midnight, and it's in the Santa Fe Division. And as, each year, we will add at least one or two divisions until we get all divisions where we have that Saturday to Saturday overlap. We have sixteen officers on that overlap in that division, and those individuals are being assigned to some of the higher, higher violent crime areas within, within the areas of those divisions.
Chief, how many applicants would you typically have for a new recruit class? If, if we can bring in fifty to start with, how many applicants would you?
What are we looking at now, three, four hun, maybe three hundred?
We get about sixty to seventy a lot.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, we get a lot of applications, it's getting, it's getting qualified applicants. And we're reviewing, we're looking at some of our things, because over the years, I mean, obviously generations change, standards change, you know, our standards, we've, we've tried to change those periodically, we, we want, we have high standards, we want high standards, that's why you have the Police Department, you have, we don't want to really sacrifice quality for quantity, we could probably get a lot more and have larger classes, but it's a competitive process, and we want the best applicants. So getting those best applicants does take some time. We've talked about trying to have a larger class, we, we've talked about even increasing our staffing to try to recruit more, but the bottom line is, is we don't think, even if we, we had a larger staff and doing backgrounds and those types of things, it's going to increase our numbers, because we only have a certain pool coming in on a regular basis, and that pool of qualified applicants is probably going to remain pretty much the same. So unless we want to, you know, start lowering our standards, and we have to look at them, because they have to be flexible, there's, those things change over the years, but, but we still want to have the best applicants, and that's one of the biggest challenges. So we're putting, you know, we're putting, a recruit class now is up to seven months, we have more training in, in our classes than any other agency in the state, we feel it's necessary, I mean, just for instance, we're the only one, probably in the United States, that, that has a bilingual requirement or class that we teach, so that takes up time and hours, so we've had to increase our hours for those types of programs, but we feel like it's important, based on our diversity within our community and the need for that. So there's some things we're going to look at, we're doing a lot more on social media, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that, because I've got a slide on our social media program, we're doing a lot more, we're working with the city on the, on, on the new website, we want to, we want to really want to revitalize our website and use it for recruiting, we're posting a lot of stuff on Facebook, those types of things, trying to, trying to get the message out to that type, that generation now that we're dealing with. So, you know, short of going out and trying to steal other people from other departments, which I don't like to do, and believe me, those have been talked about, but we could probably increase the number of applicants by doing things like that, and there have been agencies across the country that have done that, but I'm, I'm not really in favor of doing that, because we have great working relationships with our, our local, local agencies, and, so we've just kind of, we've kind of refrained from doing that over the years. So, i- it, it's a challenge, and, and we've talked about things about trying to overlap classes and do things like that, but again, it's a process of, of recruiting, processing, and trying to get the best applicants we can. And I've always, I've always been an advocate of not, not sacrificing that quality for quantity over the years, so. And, and we're going to get there, right now, we have, we have the most officers on the department we've ever had in the history of the department, based on you adding those positions, we have, we have a thousand and sixty-nine right now, and right now, we have authorized eleven forty-nine, that wouldn't include the proposed numbers that you, you were proposing for this year, but, but we have right now the most number of officers, and we're going to, we're going to get there, it's just, it's, it's catching up to those several years where we didn't have, and we had so many vacancies. Now, we've had a lot of officers retire, we usually have thirty to thirty-five officers retire a year, we've had a few more this year, based on the pension system, and, you know, officers getting closer to retirement and want to take advantage of maybe a high interest rate on their payout, so, you know, we've had quite a few, I think fires experienced some. I think fires experienced some of the same thing, but not to the point where we don't think that, that it's, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt us and be able to keep officers in the field. So, we're gonna get there. I'd like to get there faster, but again, you know, we're, and we're looking at, we're looking at ways of doing that. I just sent my training major up to DC for conversations on use of force, which is obviously a big issue now, use of deadly force. And also, they discussed training issues. And, and like he said, he said that we're, we're suffering some of the same issues everybody else is across the nation. And there, everybody's searching for answers. So, moving on, if there's no further questions on that. In violent crime in two thousand sixteen?
Chief?
I'm sorry?
Back to the question of staffing. It's been my impression for some time that we are adding as many additional people as we have the capacity to push through the system. Is that a fair?
That, that is fair.
It's not, we're, we're inhibited by our lack of, by a seven-month cycle, by how many people we can put in the training facility. We're not inhibited by, if we had more money, day-to-day, operating money. That, is that a fair assumption?
I think that's, yes, that's pretty fair.
So, the only way to do it faster would be to add more infrastructure funding. That is a bigger training facility, so classes could be larger.
Right.
Or some internal changes where you shorten the cycle or something might do that.
The class size would help. Again, you know, we would ha- we'd have to add some staffing to try to increase the numbers. We'd have to, we'd have, we'd have to be successful in trying to, in attracting our, the quality applicants, or if we decide. I mean, it's, right now, we're working, we're processing more applicants than we ever have, because before, we really had, we didn't have to really process anybody that didn't have less than sixty hours of college. We don't require college. We require a, a high school degree, but we don't require college. And that, and that was really, that was, and that's really deliberate to try to get people from the military that may have not been able to afford school, that have gone to the military, they can get a degree if they come here, they have military experience. We still wanna, there's good pe- good, honest kids getting out of school that maybe couldn't afford school, but we still wanna look at. And, and we can, we can provide them with the education in many cases. The city has a great program for, for furthering somebody's education. So, part of it is still gonna be, even, the facility is an issue, because we need a new facility. I know the city manager's authorized us to, to look at the possible next bond issue and looking at a new training center. So, he's already given us to go ahead and, and looking at that. So, which is, which is really needed. There's a lot of things we need as far as that goes. But that's one equation of it. The other equation is, like I said before, is going to be able to, to get the number of qualified applicants. And we've done fine getting fifty or so. You know, we started this class with fifty, we lost three. I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna talk about our, our cadet program, which I, what I'm real excited about, and I think it could affect and have an impact on some of our recruiting, especially inner-city kids, which are primarily made up of minorities, which is one of our biggest challenges, recruiting minorities. But, but I'm pretty excited about it. And I know Tomas Doherty, Sergeant back here, he's been working with Metro Tech, and I'll get into that further. But he's done a tremendous job in working and trying to help put this together. So, and I'll talk about it. And I think it will, I think it may help, help us in, in recruiting, being more proactive and trying to, to encourage kids to get into law enforcement, especially the inner-city youth that.
Councilman White, we've had, Chief and I have had a number of discussions about this, on whether we could shorten the class, which he does not wanna do, because he thinks it impacts the quality of recruits, whether or not we can have simultaneous classes going on, or maybe two classes at one time and going to a different facility. There's also the restriction on the applicant pool that he, he deals as we go on down the line. We are making progress on, on getting those vacancies filled. But it's, there aren't apparent issues, that they're just a good solution to go, go and get a, a bunch of them online. We talked about CLEET, we talked about, we, we've talked about a whole lot of different options out there. And I, I think the best is that he's trying to try to get less gap between the classes as we go forward and try to close some of that and, and continue on down the line. Because we are, we're, we're chipping away at it, and we're getting more officers on, on, onboard. We have more sworn officers on the street today than we've ever had before. We're, we're moving toward that end. It's not ideal, but we're, we are making progress.
Well, the concern is one that you hardly go to a neighborhood meeting. If you bring it up, if you let the conversation go to that, you don't go to very many meetings that you don't hear a concern about the statistics of what we had years ago and how much the population's grown and that we haven't kept up. And we, you acknowledge that. I mean, we talked about why that happened. I, I'm, I was asking just for assurance publicly that throwing more money at it at this point wouldn't change it. If that, if that's the case.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
I don't think anybody, given the light of what's happened in the last year or two or three with regard to, to police interactions with the public, would want to decrease our standards. But, I mean, that's, that's, that's a, that's a non-starter. We, we can't go there. We might, we might put more emphasis in the recruitment of minorities. Those are things that, that might change that. But I certainly don't think we oughta lower the standards. So, I know Larry's also very concerned about the numbers. And I'm sure he hears it at the same places I hear it. I just wanna be sure that we're doing all we can, given the environment we're in, to continue to escalate the numbers as rapidly as we can.
We're, we're gonna do that. And we're gonna continue to look at different ways of doing that.
Can you, can you, I know you don't like to recruit from within law enforcement, within or outside the state, but can you talk about the idea of shortening the training requirements for those who are already in law enforcement? Would that be a possibility?
Well, that, that could be possible, and we've discussed that. Again, that goes back to, if we, if we, if we say you're already CLEET certified, you've already had a certain amount of training, and all we have to do is teach you in certain areas that would be specific to our municipality. If it's in-state, they even have, already have had training on state law. They would need training on municipal ordinances, they would need training on our policy procedures, because they would be different from some other agency, some of those types of things. But the, the issue is, we would, we would probably get some more applicants, but I, where I would get them is from other agencies within the metro area. I would be essentially still being, putting things, putting things in competition, more competi- we're still in competition. That's why you have the Edmonds and the Moores and the Normans try to keep their salary levels the same as Oklahoma City, so that they can compete in, in recruiting. If I, if I offer some of those types of things, being a larger agency, I will be, I will still be taking officers from those different agencies, because they will, you know, they will abandon those agencies. And I, I hate to put something in place like that, because, because all agencies in the metro area have been, have been fully staffed to, you know, benefit us. And the working relationships, and I've seen, I've seen that happen in California, for instance. And in California, what happened over the years is that they did that sort of thing. They would, you could, you, they would actually, they even got even more liberal than that and said, "We'll take you at your rank, and we'll keep you at the same rank. And we'll, you know, we'll do some additional training, and then we'll put you and continue to pay you." Well, what happened was, in those different agencies, is the salaries continued to go up. Said, "Okay, well, we'll, we're gonna pay more now than them, so that, that we won't lose you." So, you end up getting it where all of a sudden, you're driving everybody's salaries up astronomically high, which has just devastated, you know, the municipalities in California. I mean, that's part of it, besides from, from, you know, hurt, I, I think it hurts those relationship with other agencies and municipalities. Now, out of state, I really, I don't, I don't care, so I don't mind recruiting out of state. And I think, I think we're gonna see more of that with the things we're gonna be doing online, with our Facebook. We're doing a lot more on Facebook and exposing our training process and, and our recruiting process, and our applications are online. And that gets, that's not, there's no borders to that. And, and also with, with our process through our website, you know, there's a lot of people that if they're interested in law enforcement, will search those sites to see where those vacancies are. So, I think, I think we're, we may end up seeing a lot more. Now, we don't go out of state and go to a particular city and recruit. Some, some cities do, but I don't see them do it that often. I don't, I don't think they have a great deal of success in doing that. Because most, most officers are pretty committed to the agencies they have, especially in a large municipality. They like where they're working, their benefits. They put so many years in, they don't wanna give, give those benefits up. So, you know, I, but I think, but I'm not opposed to, to outside recruiting. It's just, you know, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't really seen a huge benefit. We used to do it several years ago, but quite a few years ago, actually, and we didn't see that greater benefit to it.
Can I just ask you, because it, it seems like, I, I just wanna ask you about the training facility. Because it seems like, even though we're at the, the most we've ever had, which is a thousand sixty-nine, we're still not where the police manpower said we needed to be. And it doesn't seem like there's any way that we are gonna get there. You've got probably thirty percent of the forces retirement-eligible. You've got certain pension things that are driving people to retirement. You can't do enough classes. Assuming that, assuming you did get a larger pool of qualified applicants, it seems like you would have to have more training classes to get to that number. And then that brings us back to the training facility. And you said that there's some discussion, but I guess in specific, specifically, I'm wondering, we talked about it briefly at the financial workshop in January. Is, is there thought to doing a study on what that training facility would look like, the scope of it, how it would address these issues? Doing a formal study like we did with the police headquarters study before the last bond?
We're actually, we're actually working with public work and an architect, both fire and police, and we're working hand in hand with them. We just started that process to do just that, to give, to give the council an idea of the type of facility, the scope of the facility that we would need. So, the city manager did authorize that, some monies to be spent. So, we have, I can't remember the name of the architect.
I can't either, but we're, we're beginning that process.
We're doing that process.
One of the things I do wanna point out is that, you know, you say thirty percent are eligible for retiring. Well, but they don't retire. And, and I know they're eligible, but they, they don't. And if we have a thousand police officers out there, just for round numbers, and they work twenty-five years, that means forty of them are gonna retire every year. If they work twenty years, that means fifty of them are gonna retire every year. If we're adding somewhere between ninety, around ninety-five every fourteen months, we're adding. We're gonna, there's gonna be a net gain as we go forward. And so, we are adding to the process. I know there are problems with it, and we're not going as fast as we'd like to. But overall, if you, if you just take, take a look at, because that's not, you're losing about fifty a year, are you not? Roughly. It comes and goes.
Well, yeah, we, it's probably less than that. I mean, thirty, maybe thirty to retirement and a few that have to retire.
So, with that, and we're, okay. With that, and if we're adding ninety-five or a hundred, or whatever it is, every, every thirteen, fourteen months, whatever it is, there's a net gain. And we're gonna, we're gonna catch up with time.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe not. Maybe we'll catch up, but there, there's an opportunity to certainly add and, and gain on that number.
Right. And I, the city manager's absolutely right. And our, our workforce is we, is getting younger. We're losing people. People are staying longer. I mean, officers are staying longer. The retirement system is really a good incentive for that, which, you know, is beneficial the longer they stay. And we're get, we're becoming a younger police department. So, you won't see, you won't see the retirements as we, you know, as we, after a few years that we're seeing now, leaving that pension system. Because that, two factors, we're younger and, and people are staying longer. And believe me, the security, the job security that the city provides and that the police department decides is a, I, I can see a huge benefit in that now, with a lot of kids getting out of college and they're seeing their, that they don't have that stability. And I think there's a lot more of them that have started coming to realize that, that it's a very stable profession and the city can be. And you have some type of retirement that you don't have in a lot of other professions. So, you know, I, I think we're gonna make that headway. And I, and, and, and just keeping in mind, adding, the way you're doing it, adding, I mean, adding those, those positions, twenty positions or so, and keeping up with that over the years is a much better way of doing it than getting two-hundred and something behind like we have years and years ago, and then trying to play catch-up. Because that, that's what we're dealing with now, is trying to play catch-up. And then when you do have an economic downturn for a few years, it, it exacerbates that. So, by, by adding those few numbers, eventually, we will get caught up with from how far we've gotten behind. And then just trying to keep up with that incrementally, so it's not such a huge impact, you know, on, on city budgets and a huge impact on services. So, I, I think it's, we'll, like I say, I think we'll get there. I really do. Well, I don't think, I know we'll get there. And I think in the next couple of years, you're gonna see even a greater, you know, greater number of officers out there in the field.
What's the percentage of applications we have coming in from the military?
You know, I, I don't have that answer, but I'll, I'll get it, get it to you.
I mean, that would seem to me, we could go nationwide, looking at people coming out of the military services.
Yeah, it is. And a lot of military that come through here will come back and apply if they're interested in law enforcement. And we do do recruiting at our different, different facilities throughout, throughout the state, our military facilities. We do put that information out to them and work with their human resource people, let them know that jobs are available, we'd be interested in, in talking to them. So, we're pretty proactive with the military.
Chief, at the risk of putting everybody in the room in danger of a lightning bolt, have you ever considered extending the retirement from twenty years to twenty-five, both in, or has fire? You know, people are living longer now. That twenty-year retirement was done fifty, sixty years ago, when people didn't live as long and they didn't stay healthy as long. Would that have an impact if the, if the potential retirement date was advanced to twenty-five?
I, I would, anecdotally, right now, I would, I would say no. Because officers, when I came down here, officers, I'm, I'm not saying, I don't think it'd have any effect, I don't think it'd have that much impact, because, because officers aren't leaving at twenty years. Before, when I came, when I started, I hate to say how many years, when I started, you left at twenty. The idea was you came in, you were gonna leave at twenty, primarily because the pay was so low and the benefits weren't as good, the pension system wasn't as good. So, you left and went and worked another job. That's not the case anymore. They, officers are staying over twenty-five years, just because they choose to, to get the, the most out, out of that. And, and in many cases, they're staying thirty-something. I think you'll see more officers staying thirty-something years. It kinda depends on whether or not they're working the streets. As you get older, working the streets a lot more.
I'd still like to see the number of people that retire at twenty, in both, both police and fire, just see what the number is.
We can, we can provide that.
It may be, I said it might create a lightning bolt, if, with, I'm sure there are a lot of people that wouldn't like that. But perhaps there are fewer people than I, than I thought that that would have impact. So, I'd like to know.
It'd be less than it ever has. And then, of course, that's a state issue. The state would have to, you know, would have to address that.
Well, there's gotta be, back to the premise that it would be beneficial to the, to the numbers that you have, if you raise the retirement age by five years. There's gotta be a loss, a huge loss. It, it happens no matter what the retirement age is. If it's at sixty, what, there's a huge loss to the employer once somebody retires, because you gotta retrain people, rehire people, start. There is somewhat of a savings in terms of salary savings, but in terms of the time it takes to get to that level, there is a big loss there at, at anyone's retirement. It just would seem, at, at least we oughta look at that, to see if it would impact anything.
We'll get those numbers for you.
I have one, another question that relates to something you talked about earlier, and it's in terms of the statistics with regard to satisfaction, citizen satisfaction. Are, have those statisti- is the pool that we use of numbers large enough to break out the areas of Oklahoma City that are minority-majority areas and see what that is there? In most cities, the, the satisfaction, public satisfaction has not been that poor across the community. But in the minority-majority areas, it's been very poor. And I think that may tell us something about what we need to be doing, or if we need to be doing anything, about.
Doug Dollar can really address the citizen survey and, and the, the backup data that we have, but I'm pretty sure the answer to that's yes.
All the data that we get from ETC, we have in our GIS system, so we could break that down by area and, and provide that kind of data.
I just wonder if it's large enough. I, I, I know you could break it down, because I've seen the dots on the map where they came seen the dots on the map where they came from. But I just wonder if there are enough...
There are, but as, you know, the more you break it down, the less reliable the survey results are. But yes, you could, you could look at it.
Yeah.
Right. We roughly get about a hundred and fifty responses per ward, roughly, you know, we get about twelve hundred or so. So it does become a little less statistically significant, but we could certainly pull that.
Well, I'd like to see that statistic also. That would be something we ought, maybe we should measure, because when these problems have occurred in these other cities, it's been, it's shown that the dissatisfaction with the police departments are much higher in the minority-majority areas than they are in the city as a whole. And that's something we ought to measure, I think.
One, one thing I did one year, when our percentages dropped, is I compared the year before. And I took the data that they have and collected, and then correlated it with the, with the economic status, whether it was lower income and, and the number of satisf, the number of people, the percentage went down in the area that had a lower socioeconomic status than the previous year, which was slightly higher. So I think, I think you're absolutely on target. Obviously, we were involved more because you have more crime in those areas, you know, those types of things, in more depressed, lower economic areas. We're going to be there and be involved more. And usually, when we're there involved, it's, it's negative. It's not a positive experience for some or for most. So, not because of us necessarily, but because of the community.
Well, it seems to me that we use those numbers, and we throw them around a lot in our planning. But that's a number that could be extracted out of the data that we have that would tell us whether or not that's, whether we're right about some of that. So I'd just like to see what it looks like.
Happy to do so.
Continuing on violent crime, if you look at, if another, one of the other, several other results we measure, by 2016, to reduce the number of aggravated assaults citywide by five and a half percent. The last two years, we, we have thirteen, we were over five percent. Last year, I think we're at three-point-five percent. We're continuing that. As long as that line's going down, I'm pretty happy. Some of our efforts have, you know, I think have paid off, both in aggravated assaults and again, in property crimes, which we aren't highlighting here, because we're trying to measure the assault category. But you can see for calendar year, our actual's thirty-one seventy-seven, our actual was thirty-one seventy-seven year-to-date. And that only goes through February, we've had forty-nine. So there's really not a big, a large enough number to tell how, really, what kind of trend we have going this year. But we're trying to reach a target of less than three thousand eighteen, which would be about a hundred and fifty-eight fewer aggravated assaults, so we had back in fourteen. Two thousand sixteen, we want to reduce the number of drive-by shootings by twenty-five percent, you can see here. In fourteen, we had fifty-five. We have sixteen this year. We're probably about on track to have about the same number. We're shooting for having less than forty-one. To put things in perspective, in two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and ninety-two drive-bys. So by two thousand and fourteen, you can see the reduction we had from a hundred and ninety-five to fifty-five, based on some of the efforts, the overtime efforts, the gang issues that we've put together. And most of those are going to be committed by, by gang members, not necessarily against other gang members, but by gang members, and it could be related. So, we've made our biggest impact, I think, we don't think, no, in that category. By two thousand and sixteen, we want to reduce the number of gang-related deadly weapon assaults. We only started measuring this last year, because we didn't actually measure this. They were kind of lumped in with all other, other deadly weapon assaults. So we're, in our actual number, was our first year to actually measure that fully. We had seventy-five. We're up to fourteen this year. We're trying, we're shooting for a number of less than sixty. So, that's, that's a new measurement, and it's, we'll be able to compare ourselves better after this year to see if, if we're making, what kind of impact we're making on that, which are specifically gang-related. And the next one shows a chart, basically, of our aggravated assaults. And you can see the trend. We're now thirty-one seventy-seven. We're act, we're actually below our two thousand and eight number of thirty-five oh-one, and bearing down on two thousand and seven statistics, which was, which was one of our lowest. So you can see where the trend is down, which is, we want to keep that trend, if all possible. Our next issue is advancing technology. I'll just say right now, we get tremendous support from IT Shad and his staff. He, what a job they have, and it's growing, and it's evolving, and it's always needing to be updated. And our system's one of the largest they deal with, and they do a tremendous job and are very responsive with what they have to work with. The increased use of advanced technology in commission and investigation of crimes, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased time and resource requirements for investigations, unsolved crimes, increased crime, and again, decreased citizen satisfaction with police services. Some of our strategies, we want to, by two thousand and seventeen, increase the number of digital and other electronic media device examinations by one hundred percent. This, you know, we kind of got out in front of this years ago. We realized what the need was. We really overhauled and changed our criminal intelligence unit and our forensic examiners that we, we actually started training aggressively to be able to, to analyze hard drives. You have to realize now, in most crimes, there's something being kept electronically, whether it's on their hard drives or their, you know, their handheld device or whatever. There's just so much out there. So we're now measuring, we're measuring all of those. We used to just measure hard drives, where we may have a hundred and forty-something examinations, where we're up over four hundred examinations now, when you're including laptops, you're including handheld phones, those types, smartphones, those types of things. One hundred percent of all DNA cases submitted for property and personal crimes will be analyzed within ninety days. Our, our results are basically those two things. And you can see where, fiscal year to date, this year, we've examined digital devices, two hundred and ninety-four, which is more than what our total number was, say, four or five years ago, which was a hundred and forty-something. Fiscal year fifteen target is three seventy-five. I think we'll reach that for, or fif, fiscal year fifteen target's three seventy-five, and our target for sixteen is four, four hundred and two. And again, we've, we've worked on keeping staffing in those, in those units to be able to. And most of those, most of those examinations are in support of other crimes. It may be robbery. Most of those other units have to have support, just as we have to have support from IT. They have to have support of our forensic examiners, who have to be qualified to testify in court as to what they did. So they have to be trained, and, and we try to keep up with that and make sure we have support for all of our investigative units. And by two thousand and fifteen, one hundred percent of all DNA cases submitted will be analyzed within ninety days. We think that's possible. We're about ninety-six, ninety-seven cases behind currently. We're backlogged. Obviously, if there's a priority case, we pull that out of that backlog and we work on it, because it's going to need to be presented for court. But one of the reasons is, is because we, for the last eight to nine months, we've been, we've lost a chemist, and we're trying to replace a DNA chemist. And, and you'll see also, that we feel like the workload is significant with the things that we do now with DNA, take DNA from property crimes and those types of things, probably more so than many other municipalities, that we're going to, we're requesting to add a DNA chemist this year to our staff. And I'll have that in further information for you. Metal theft, I'll kind of whiz right through this, because we've been doing a good job. Metal thefts are really going down. A continuing trend of metal theft not adequately addressed will result in increased perception of crime, demand on city services, and obviously, again, the decrease of, decrease of feeling of public safety. Our strategy is to continue to use the metal theft unit to improve tracking, proactively increase the quantity of metal theft investigations, which is getting harder, because we're getting fewer cases, which is a good thing. Increased coordination with metal recyclers to improve compliance with applicable laws. Some of our measurements for that, in two thousand and seventeen, increased the number of metal theft investigations for prosecution. You can see fiscal year to date, our actual's a hundred and eight, our target's a hundred and thirty. We should, we'll probably reach that. Actually, if we don't reach that, it's not a bad thing. It just means that maybe we've had, we're getting fewer cases, which means we're having fewer metal thefts. And that's, that's a positive thing. Our target again for sixteen will be one thirty. Again, over the years, with everything we've done, the ordinances this council has changed, the state statutes that we pushed to be changed, accountability, ability to our recyclers has increased, our contacts and coordination with them. And you can see in the bottom here, compliance checks conducted, a hundred and twenty-four. As our actual in fourteen, to year-to-date already, we're at a hundred and twenty-three. That'll increase. That's significant, because even though the crimes may be going down, we want to continue that relationship and our vigilance on our recyclers, because they can have the biggest impact on not taking stolen property and, and discouraging people from stealing it in the first place, because they want to get paid for it. So our individual charges have, are right at, right at our target. And the suspects arrested, you can see the numbers. But we actually see overall cases going down. And probably next year, we won't have this in our budget presentation, because, because I think we've reached, we've been doing what we, we thought we wanted to do with what, with our units. Okay, we're now going to get into our budget changes for this year. I'm going to, turn too many pages for me. For our budget changes, we're going to add nineteen additional sworn positions, a seventeen police officer positions, is what we're proposing for council, two lieutenant positions. All these positions will be assigned to operations. I'm really trying to make a priority at this point of getting all these positions assigned in operations, carrying a few more vacancies in investigations. But I won't let it get to the point where it's going to, will hurt those investigations. So we're really committing those mainly to operations. We'll actually end up with twenty, actually an additional position, because as you'll see further ahead in some of our changes, is we're reducing, we're turning one of our police positions in nine-one-one, sergeants retiring, and we're replacing that position with a sworn officer. And that position will go out to the field. So we'll actually have a net increase of twenty more officers out of this year's, out of this year's budget. Okay, applicant support technician. This is, this is the position out of nine-one-one I just talked about. Now, we're moving that sergeant position to the field, and we're replacing that position. We're creating a non-sworn position to do the function of what Sergeant, Sergeant Hill did for, for many, many years. A second FOP position at eighty thousand, it's a little bit deceiving, because you really have a net effect, a zero, net zero effect, because that's, that'd be a contract. They would actually pay the city back that total number, that eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-six, if they fill that position. Then that, they will, they will have to pay for that. So it won't, the city won't be paying for that. But it is in our budget, showing in the budget, because it has to be funded, in case it does happen. Crime analysis position. For years, we have had the National Guard, we've had the National Guard that provide an analyst to our special projects unit, narcotics, vice, a lot of our covert, long-term investigations, we've had, we've had an analyst. Well, they have had to quit doing that. So, we need that position. It's a critical position. They do stuff for vice, for, for human trafficking, for our undercover narcotics investigation. Having that analyst in there is pretty critical. So we're asking to create a position, a crime analyst position for our special projects unit. The DNA chemist I'd already talked about, the needs there, it's growing. We think we need to do that. Police office equipment, it shows about one-point-seven million. That's going, that's things for like body camera, ammunition purchases. We're increasing the rifle program by eighty, total a hundred and sixty, so that we'll have in the field. Ammunition for that goes up. It's very expensive. Rifle ammunition's a lot more expensive. Our tasers, some of the tasers we have are getting old. We need to replace those tasers. They need to be upgraded. And then, and then computer replacement is also being included in that. We used to, we used to fund a lot of computer replacement throughout the whole department with asset forfeiture. Our asset forfeiture funds are, are not as much as they used to be. They're really, they're declining. So we're, we're having to do more and more of that out of our, out of our general fund. Also, budget changes, body worn cameras. I know you've heard a lot about that. The number that you see there of three hundred and thirty-three thousand is primarily for personnel to manage that, and any contract that we end up developing as a result of the process and, and putting cameras out there, contracts, maintenance, that type of thing. We want to lead a police service technician. We, this is, we've tried to do this in the past. We finally, we finally accomplished that. We used to handle all the fishing permits and things out of the police department out at Lake Efnor. We've always thought that'd be better served, being under the lake itself and the trust, water. So, we've turned that over to them. They've agreed to that. So we're taking that out of our budget. General fund line item budget, primarily some of those reductions are in our jail contract. Our jail contracts, we're actually housing fewer prisoners in the jail, not, fewer, some fewer prisoners, but mainly not as long. Our courts have done a great job of getting those municipal charges and those people's charges out of that jail and not holding them in there quite so long. So we've had a reduction in that, and that's reflected primarily in that number, not totally, but primarily. And then the reduction in asset forfeiture budget that I previously talked about. We're going to highlight a few, a few programs. The first one's going to be CIT. And I, it's timely. I just wanted to highlight it, because, because nationwide, this is being talked about, is having better training, mental health training for officers. We've had, we've had the CIT program since the, since two thousand, since two thousand, about two thousand and one, two thousand and two, when Chief MT Berry was here. We put the CIT program in, based on the Memphis model. We've been way ahead of the game. We have a great program. We have a great group of officers that, that are trained specifically in dealing with the mental health. And it's so good that in dealing with mental health throughout the state, they, they really kind of ask us to help train other officers throughout the state. And we want to be able to do that, because we think it's a significant problem. So we teach about three classes a year statewide, and some of the silent. We, we, we offer officers to go out and, and teach that, that forty-week, that forty-week, forty-hour class. So, and this, this shows you, police agencies that we've trained, or we've been involved in training throughout the state, and then also sheriff officers that have been trained. And we think it's a huge benefit, not only to our, our community, but also to, on a statewide basis, because it is a statewide problem. The next program, this is one I'm pretty excited about, and I mentioned Tomas, who's been working on this program. We, Metro Tech has, has, has had some classes over the last several years for kid, students that are interested in law enforcement, specifically, their junior and senior years. And so they hold those classes at Metro Tech. And so you've had, you've had some pretty good interest from intercity kids. This is all Oklahoma City kids. These are intercity kids. It's a very diverse group of kids. And, and they take those classes, and they actually come out of there, actually with enough hours to be CLEAT certified, out of that class. And at the age of eighteen, of course, we don't hire at eighteen. They've still got about three more years to go. But we've been involved in doing some of the training through these classes in the high schools. We want to get more involved. We want to get more involved with the kids. We already do a summer program, a cadet program, where we take these kids for a week and have for several years for a week, just the Oklahoma City Police Department. And kind of like our Citizens' Police Academy, we put them through what the police department does, what it takes, what our qual, you know, what we ask in qualifications, those types of things. And then we graduate them at the end of that week. We're going to do more with that. We're going to, we want to be more involved with that and get a commitment. Tomas has been working with OCCC, OSU, to offer free college to kids. OCCC already offers that. Not many, I mean, surprisingly, not many people know that, but an intercity student can get, go to college free there. So we want to work closely with them to work with these kids to get their applications in. If they're really serious about being a police officer, and they want, and they still want to, they want to stay involved with the Oklahoma City Police Department, we want to keep them involved. So we're going to have programs throughout the years, part of being a part of the cadet program, where they go to college. They, they're taking some hours in college. We're also going to work with them in finding, and we've already been working with places like Integris, who have, who have security programs, where they need to have people that are CLEAT certified, working with them to take some of these individuals, so provide them jobs while they're going to school part-time. Also, we will do programs throughout the year and utilize them. It may be at special events and those types of things. We'll create uniforms for them to, to, to work and keep them involved with this police department and tell, and try to develop them as, as individuals that we may want to hire at the age of twenty-one. We have some other ideas and plan, maybe to get them hired, actually by the age of twenty. But we're working on those too, so that we could, we could really go ahead and work them in. And they've still got to reach, they've still got to reach the standards. They still got to have the qualifications. But I think we have a better shot of, of encouraging a lot of, a very diverse group of kids sticking with it. If nothing else, they're going to go to college, and they're going to be better for it, whether they join us or not. So, it's, I'm pretty excited about it. I know Sergeant Doherty, he's done a great job, has a passion for that. So we're going to, we're going to be really involved. And it gets the community involved also. So, I think it...
Chief, congratulations. That's a really innovative and terrific program. And if you can work with, you know, OSU, OKC, and OCCC, and help them develop programming that brings you a pipeline, it's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, pretty excited about it.
Congratulations.
If you see the kid, if you see the students in the summer classes that we put together, they're just, I'll tell you what, they're great, they're great kids. And they just, they just need some help. These are some kids that, some reasons, some reasons they don't go to college is because they don't know how to fill out the forms. We're going to work with them. And we're going to sit down, we're going to help them fill out forms. If you're interested, you want to be part of this program, we're going to help you go to college. We want to help you with getting a job. We want to, we want to nurture you. But also, what it does is it exposes them to law enforcement to the extent that, once you, because we do, we lose some people that get in, all of a sudden want to be cops, and they get in, and all of a sudden, they realize, well, I don't like this job. I don't think this is cut out for me. Well, you'll have less of that if you've exposed, exposed these, these students over several years to law enforcement. I think you just have a better commitment.
Quick question, as it relates to...
Quick question, as it relates to the summer camp, when, when are the applications due and when are other camps?
Well, the, the, the application is not due, they're already in, they're already in school. We're, we're taking kids that are already in this program that Metro Tech has, and their program is specific to Oklahoma City schools, which is all inner-city schools, and as we know, the majority of the students in Oklahoma City schools are made up of minorities. So there is no application, we start working with them when they're juniors and seniors in that program and in those classes and identifying them, and then, and then we, we, we take those kids in that school that we've already identified and put the ones that want to be in this, in the summer class, so they have to be specifically in that, in that class. So that's, there is, is no, that's, that's already in the process and already being done. Body worn cameras, I know we've talked about this a lot over, over months, but just to give you, just to give you an update, we, we put a working group together in November, the RFP for cameras went out in February, our response during, our response was, we received all of our responses and closed it in the middle of March, received thirteen proposals from different vendors. Our vendor response review is gonna be in, is gonna be this month, or was, was in April, vendor presentation is scheduled for early July. Out of that thirteen, we have five vendors that have made the cut for their, to do their presentations, they're gonna, we're gonna submit policies and procedures to council after the Open Records Act is finalized, because we're working with the state legislation on developing open records that specifically address body worn cameras, and it's, it's an issue across the nation, I don't know, I don't know how many are doing this, but I think very few, but Senator Holt and several legislators have been really, really worked with us very, very hard because this is a huge issue, open records obviously is a very touchy and huge issue, but he's garnered support through the Press Association, through other entities, and we've worked with him, Ed Hasbrook has done a tremendous job on developing that legislation, DA David Prater has worked with us and met with him, so we have a lot of support for that, things are really encouraging at this point in getting, getting that open records that balances our ability to be able to do our job with being very open and transparent, there, because there is a balance there, because we still have to do that job, so, and I, I think to have the Press Association say, you know, have them on board is, is very significant, and to say they understand what those issues are. So I think we're on our way, but we also have to develop those policy procedures that we want you to see and, and bless, obviously. We're gonna do a thirty, after we pick, probably pick three different vendors out of that five, we'll do a wear test to see how the cameras work, that'll be in August and September for thirty days, then we'll have a vendor selection and contract negotiation, we're shooting for somewhere October, November of fifteen, and then what we were, what we were talking about doing is trying to have initially a hundred cameras to test over like a twelve-month period to begin with. I'm a firm believer in baby steps, I'm a firm believer this is something new nationally, I've seen a lot of large agencies just jump off the edge and buy six hundred cameras and it's been a nightmare for them to learn how to manage and what the systems do, and I think financially, not spending that much money and, and tactically, it's better for us to learn how to manage that, taking these baby steps and to see where it's gonna go. Plus it helps us look at the Open Records Act, and if there's any changes we need to tweak and make, then we can also work with that, so, anyway, that's kind of where we are on that. The next one is our CIT, our CIS, our civilian investigative specialists, as, you know, several years ago, we got an agreement with, with the FOP to civilianize our, our CIS program, which was all made up of officers, or I'm sorry, this is a different program, that's CSI, I'm talking different program here, this is, this is in addition to that, this isn't replacing officers, this is adding non-sworn, which started in two thousand and thirteen where the council authorized four additional positions. We added those four positions and lieutenant and other four positions, lieutenant last year in fourteen, fifteen. I just wanted you to look at the numbers to see what you've done, since the exception, the total number of calls for service has been over thirteen thousand, and you have to remember, the, the large portion of that number was, was just with four positions, because we just recently got those additional four positions added and out there, activity, so large of these numbers are primarily with just the four positions. Total number of latent prints obtained for analysis is six hundred and five, the total number of swabs collected for DNA is three forty-five, so these are additional DNA swabs for property crimes that we didn't have before, so hence the, the need for adding DNA chemists to be able to keep up with a lot of the workload, because it's been beneficial, we've solved property crimes, we've solved burglaries, we never would have solved before by taking swabs off windows, window seals, glasses, those types of things and being able to prove who the suspect is. Our hot program, our homeless outreach, I just wanted to show you, it's, you know, it's still a fairly new program, we have two full-time officers committed to that, I, you know, I can see personally complaints and stuff going down on the homeless, especially in the central downtown area where we, we had, had a lot of, a lot of the homeless living, you see where they had activity, other activity from August to March, it's over fourteen hundred, placements have been a hundred and twenty-two, and these are people, when you say placements, these are people that have actually gotten off the street, that in some cases have been living on the street for years, and they've been able to work with them, we have offices at the, at the, on the West End facility, the Homeless Alliance, they actually have offices there now, they work closely with them, they work closely with other, all other providers, upward transitions, Jesus House, City Rescue Mission, Goodwill, Catholic, I could go on and on and on of the social agencies that these officers work with in trying to get the homeless help. Not everybody wants it, but it's there and, and we think it's been very, very beneficial. Total calls, five thirty-eight, and then they visit a lot of camps, we have a lot of camps, in many cases, they, those camps end up, we get people out of there that can, that needs, needs service, the ones that don't, there's some of them that have warrants, these officers still make arrests, if somebody has a warrant for them and need to go to jail, these officers still do that, but primarily they're out there to work with them and, and really get some compliance and trying to get some help for them. Next one is social media, I'm highlighting it because it's just been tremendously successful. We, we use this out of our public information office, we send out public safety messages, crime incidents, photos of wanted suspects, list nation of crime tips, we do, we have sixty-five thousand followers on Facebook, we have sixteen thousand six hundred followers on Twitter, we're starting a next door in conjunction with, with the city's next door program, which is kind of like a Facebook for neighborhoods and which we're gonna be interactive with, so it gives us better communication with, with, specifically with a single neighborhood and providing, and providing crime information and working with them with their problems. We have, we're doing, we're gonna really do a lot of recruiting, where we're actually posting a lot, we'll go out and take, we'll take video of, of a class that we're having, and we'll post it on Facebook to show the type of training and those types of things in hopes of getting more people interested, we've gotten good feedback on that. Community interaction, you can see the picture there, this picture depicts two OCPD officers that were called to the park and found a woman with her four children sleeping in a car, they were homeless, officers boyet, and Dutton took it upon themselves to find shelter for the family, put gas in the woman's car, and even bought some toys for the kids. And so, you know, with all, with all the negative things that we have going on, we have a lot of officers out here doing this every day, and that's some of the things that we want to highlight in our Facebook, it gives us the opportunity to do it if we can't get a story on it, so. It's the, the Facebook, and of course it's, that's the way the, the genera, the generations are going now, they're doing a lot of their communication on Facebook, so. We think it's beneficial, and to end it out, our new police headquarters, it, it looks good. I'm excited, the inside, they're working on the inside, doesn't look like much on the, working much on the outside, because they're really working on the inside, and it's, the space is exciting, the construction began in January, they think they'll, they think they'll be done by the end of August or September, and hopefully we'll be starting moving in in September. Great job, Winn's done a great job with the, with the construction, very, very pleased with it, had a great working relationship, so it's, it's going well. Our new Southwest briefing stations is, is quite a bit behind schedule, had some issues, but we started construction in May of thirteen, you can see it's about ten thousand eight hundred square feet. We also have a, another plan at some point to actually put our air support unit out there, as you know, we're sitting on downtown airpark, and at some point that's gonna have to be moved because it's surrounded by private ownership, so, but it also, it's probably, once it's completed and we get moved in here in the next month or two, it's gonna probably be our best briefing station, the layout's great, and it's, it's gonna be nice, so it's, it's on the, it's on the northeast corner of the Rogers Airport, so, great location. Any questions? Further questions?
Well, on the Facebook, if you're reaching thirty-one million people, you must be getting some national exposure, so that seems positive. I just want to ask on this, back on the staffing, we have a thousand sixty-nine on the street, we have budgeted, how many, eleven?
We've, we've budget, we've budgeted eleven, we've budgeted eleven forty-nine, that's not including if you approve the additional nineteen, it would be up to about, what, eleven sixty-nine?
So, so if we do nothing, we have budgeted to add eighty officers, and we're not gonna be able to train that many this year. So I guess the, the question is, the 1.4 million for the seventeen additional officers, you're not, this year you're not gonna see those seventeen officers actually get through training and be on the street, so what is, what is happening with the 1.4 million, is it just, is it all going to overtime programs or?
It's not all being used for overtime, and I can't, I, I know that that, the overtime funding we are using in those, those areas is being used from that funding, but I don't know specifically, I don't know if, if Mike can address that, all the other things that it may be used for, and there may be, there may be, mostly, I mean, it's mostly overtime, but, okay, overtime is around eight hundred thousand.
If we can clarify those numbers, there's actually nineteen new positions, but there's one position that's being moved, that's gonna be civilianized, and that position will be moved back, so it's a net twenty, but nineteen are listed as new, just on, on the street, there's, there's twenty-six, how many total positions, Bill?
There, well, there's not, there's nineteen total positions, there's seventeen officers and, and two lieutenants, and then, and then we'll put, we're putting the one.
Now, for your department, how many total in your department?
Oh, department?
Yeah, positions.
We have authorized, we have.
How many new in this year's budget?
In this year's budget?
Yes.
For additional officers or personnel?
Personnel, positions.
Okay, I, I'd have to go back and count.
Twenty-six, Doug?
Maybe, twenty-six, okay, twenty-six. That's, that's sworn and non-sworn, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
So the, so there's seventeen officer positions, twenty-six total, the nine other ones will be implemented this year, we'll see that effect immediately. The other seventeen, that money is really going primarily into overtime programs of existing officers.
Right, it'd actually be nineteen, I mean, you're, you're, you're adding nineteen additional sworn positions in this year's budget, so it'd actually be nineteen, and, and any of the funding that we have for overtime, we will, we'll primarily be used for that.
Okay.
I can't say all of it, but, but a large majority of it will be.
Okay.
The, I, I, there's a bill in the legislature now concerning the reallocation of asset forfeiture money, is that impact, is that gonna impact you, or do you have any feeling about it one way or another?
Yes, I do, it did have a tremendous impact on us, tremendous impact on narcotics covert operations and purchasing of equipment. You know, we, we, we expend every year a great amount of asset forfeiture, most of our, all of our covert operations are totally dependent on asset forfeiture, which means if we don't, if, if that, if that's, if that's reduced, then that funding would have to be picked up in general fund if it could, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's significant, it would have a significant impact. Now, I've read the legislation, and it still allows for some, but I, I have some questions about where the funding's gonna go, because there is some language in there as to where that funding, where the money would go in the future, but it makes it much more cumbersome to be able to, to seize those funds and puts the burden back on, back on the municipality or the, or the police department or the district attorney to prove that versus the other person, which means it's, that burden's enormous for us to have to do all of that work. We can do that work, but you're talking about a lot of man-hours versus having an individual that owned the money prove to you that that money was not used for drug funds, because most of the funds that are taken are, are, are taken in conjunction with, with, with drugs themselves, drug houses, that type of thing.
But you, you've made no consideration for that one way or another in this budget, is that right?
No.
I mean, I'd be, I don't think you would at this point, but it's gonna be an interesting argument in the legislature about constitutionality and, and also the way it's divided up is kind of interesting in terms of what it does for the state and to the municipalities, but it's, it's, it's gonna be another interesting round in the legislature.
There's just so much, and I want to say this, since I'm getting the opportunity to say it, there's so much anecdotal and stuff being thrown out, out there about the misuse of asset forfeiture, which just is not true. Now, there's gonna be abuses, there's gonna be smaller agencies that have abused, have abused the use of that, I can tell you Oklahoma City has not been that way, it has been used appropriately, primarily mostly for covert actions, some other police, you know, equipment and that type of thing, like computers, we use it to help replace some of our computers throughout the whole department, and it helps us buy intelligence systems and those types of things to help fight that crime. You know, it's like throwing out the baby with the bathwater, you know, not, instead of addressing these single incidents appropriately, then you're gonna, you're gonna end up harming a lot of, a lot of agencies that use those funds appropriately and, and seize those funds appropriately.
Last I read about it, the intent to hold it over for an interim study, but it's certainly something we probably ought to take a look at from a.
We're monitoring very closely.
Because it's just, it could be impactful.
Could.
The other thing I had is talk about the cadet program, I'm glad to see that's up and running, I've talked about it a number of times, you and I have talked about it before. For those of you that don't know, it generate, a program similar to that generated a chief of police in Oklahoma City. Chief Berry was, went through a program very similar to that and became the chief police, so it, that either proves that a blind hog finds an acre once in a while, or it's a good program, one of the two.
I think it'll be a good program.
But, I, I, it's just a great idea, I think, and coordinated with the schools and with OCCC, I mean, and Metro Tech, I mean, it's just a great idea, I think. One, one more comment, the, the, the reduction in expenditures of four, almost a half a million dollars with regard to the contract reduction is, is virtually a direct result of a change of policy in the, in the court system. The Judge James has been the champion for that, and I know it's been supported by the municipal council's office for some time, at least this municipal council has supported it for a long time, and it's just a change in the way we remand people to jail, and it, that's a lot of money to save.
It is.
And it's a good, it's a good program, I want to publicly thank Judge James for her perseverance in, in changing the policy over there that generated this kind of savings.
I do have one, one clarification again about the legislature, and maybe this is more of a question for Jim, the legislature passed a bill that would restrict businesses, and I guess the city's ability to regulate where handguns could and could not be.
Senate Bill Forty-One.
Passed the House eighty-eight to four, Governor Fallon vetoed yesterday, and now they have to decide.
Right.
And Roy Williams of the chamber got involved and pointed out that this may threaten our ability to do women's softball and other things. Is, do you, is that an accurate assessment, I mean, would that, first, would that impact things like the women's softball tournament and the fairgrounds and?
It could.
Do we, do we currently restrict handguns in the fair, on the fairgrounds?
They do.
They do.
Okay. Any thoughts on, on that legislation and the impact on?
I think Mayor Cornet and I have already contacted Senator Fry on that issue this morning.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I've gotten two texts from our lobbyist already this morning on it, so he's working it also.
Very good.
I can attest, there were calls made all over the weekend by the city manager trying to get, make sure the right thing was done out there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would, would it impact?
Well, I think it impacts public safety, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think it has a huge impact on public safety, and, I mean, I, there's, there's all kinds of issues there, I mean, you know, where beer and alcohol sold and, you know, the use of beer and alcohol and having somebody that's not trained to use the gun, you know, as a police officer would be in, in a crowded venue and, and, you know, it's just a, there's a multitude, there's all kinds of issues there, I could get on my soapbox on this, and I'll, I've refrained over the years because I don't like getting billboards asking for my retirement, so.
Thanks, chief. Thank you, Chief. Next up is Chief Brian. Chief, you weren't in the room, but we, I mentioned earlier the, how proud I am of your, your abilities and your response during the recent storms, we can't control the weather, but your response is always excellent, so thank you for that.
I heard those comments, and I appreciate them very much. We have a good group of folks and they do a fine job, so, again, appreciate the recognition. Good morning, Mayor and Council, good to be here this morning with you to present our proposed two thousand sixteen budget for the fire department. I would direct you to page C one oh seven of your budget book. And while you're getting there, just a few people to recognize. Couple members of my command staff moved up here closer to me, but our deputy chief of fire prevention services and our fire marshal for the city, Kelly Sawyers, and our deputy chief of operational services, Richard Kelly. And running the program for us is our business manager, Clint Regir. I wanted to recognize another familiar face, he's in here all the time, you know him very well. Phil Sype, our union president, was here just a few minutes ago and had to step out for another meeting, but George Fina was the union president when I hired on the department thirty-three years ago, not that any of us has gotten any older since that time, but he, he's still very involved with the retirees, and it's always good to see him here and, and still enjoy his support. Mission statement of the fire department is to provide emergency response, fire prevention, and public education services to the Oklahoma City community so they can have their lives and property protected, and we do that by responding in a quick, safe, and courteous manner, meeting the needs of our citizens. As far as issue strategies and results that we continue to look at, the lack of awareness and application of personal safety measures by residents will result in fire fatalities, injuries, and property loss. So the result that we're trying to gain out of that is by two thousand eighteen, the structured fire fatality rate in Oklahoma City will be at or below the national average, which is one point oh three per one hundred thousand residents. And, and again, one of the ways that we try and affect that is to try and get people to provide them the fire prevention and fire safety education necessary to take their own safety in hand and, and do things in a way that will reduce those fatalities and injuries. One of those is reaching out, we, we have a program targeted at second grade students in the metro area here, and we, we try and get our fire safety message with our public safety education trailer to all second grade students in, in the Oklahoma City area here. Again, and our target is a hundred percent of those, and we will believe that we will do that. We did it last year, and again, I think, again, we've had some weather delays and so forth, but I think by the end of the school year, we will have accomplished that. Want to go over our, our structured fire fatality rates since two thousand four, and you can see that there's about three years there that, you know, that were somewhat abnormal, and we got spikes due to multiple fatality incidents and so forth, that, that are rare, thank goodness. But really, since about two thousand eight, you can see that, that we, we, I think we've done a fairly good job since that time of making a significant reduction. We're currently at point nine six, so we are below what we, where we want to be in terms of structured fire fatalities. Hopefully, that continues on through the rest of this fiscal year, and we, we do, again, a lot of work in our public education work section through our smoke alarm program and, and other things to try and make sure that we keep that as low as we possibly can. Another issue is population growth, development, and change in demographics that coupled with our increasing role in emergency medical services delivery will lead to growing demand on fire department services and resources, and if we don't address those, that could result in increased response time, which in turn leads to increased property loss, deterioration of patient condition, and increasing delays in delivering other services. And our goal there is for, is by two thousand eighteen and each year, that the citizens of Oklahoma City, even anticipating that growth in the outlying areas, will receive emergency responses within seven minutes, seventy percent of the time. You recall here a couple of months ago, we reported our leading for result measures, and then one of the things that we talked about during that presentation was response time. And I'm going to address this a little bit further, but if you'll permit me, I'll, I'll do that at the end of the presentation. Another issue, a growing number of fire department facilities do not meet the needs of a modern fire service, and the funding source for fleet replacement expires in two thousand eighteen. And if we don't address that, obviously, we'll, and what we're seeing already is increased facility maintenance cost and a diversion of resources from direct services to the public. One of the ways that we're addressing this, as you recall, is by two thousand sixteen, the fire department will develop a plan to renovate facilities and identify a fleet funding source. We currently have a consultant, an architectural firm, who is working on our facilities right now, doing an assessment of all of our current facilities. Basically, the, the scope of work is, is very simple, we want a, a list of facilities that, that they believe should be totally replaced, and another list that could probably be okay with a major remodel, and, and an order of priority in each of those lists. So we hope to have that study complete by July, and we, after that, we will be, we can make that information available to you. But going forward, it would be a, a, a plan or a roadmap, if you will, that, what, what we, priorities that we need to address in terms of facilities. In terms of major budget changes that we're looking for for the next fiscal year, to the general fund, twenty-one positions, or twenty-one additional positions, and this is to provide staffing for the additional fire station in the southeast part of the city, which was funded by the two thousand seven general obligation bond project. We don't need that staffing right away, and so we can delay hiring of that staffing till the mid-year, sometime in the March timeframe, to make sure that we have those people in place. We anticipate the station project being completed by next summer, hopefully. And so, again, we don't need to hire those, that staff right away, and, again, you can see the cost of that, five hundred eighty-seven thousand for the half a year, the annual cost would be the one point seven million that you see up there on the screen. For the fire sales tax fund, we've increased that, we, in our fire station projects, we've taken two million out of the fire sales tax fund to make sure that we have ample funding for those two projects. Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for facility repairs and funding for training and records management software that you approved here a few weeks ago, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is our organizational chart, as you see up there in the upper right-hand corner, with the addition of the twenty-one positions mid-year, we'll go to nine hundred and seventy-seven uniform positions, thirty-one civilian for a total of one thousand eight total positions. Our funding by source, obviously, the general fund is the, the majority of our budget at ninety-four point eight million, it funds eight hundred positions. Fire sales tax fund is the second largest source, funding forty, two hundred and eight positions at forty-four million dollars. And then you can see up there, the MAPS three use tax is primarily for our fleet replacement. Our fire prevention services division, again, Chief Sawyers manages that division, their total budget is five point three million, proposed, and that's for forty-one positions. Underneath or within the fire prevention services division, obviously, you have code enforcement and inspections work section, investigations, and public education, and you can see their corresponding budget and number of employees there. Two point two million for inspection and code compliance, seventeen employees, public safety education, one point two million, ten employees, and investigations, one point eight million, thirteen employees. Some of the measures that we look at within that division, the percentage of new construction inspections completed within three business days of request were at seventy-six percent, and our, our target is at seventy-five percent, so we're right on target there. Percentage of arson cases referred to the district attorney's office for prosecution is at, currently at twenty-eight percent. Our target is thirty-six percent, which reflects the national average. Smoke alarms distributed to citizens, a little over thirteen hundred, our, our goal there is twenty-five hundred. Again, that's part of our Project Life program that we have to make sure that all citizens have at least one working smoke alarm in their residence, whether that be a home or an apartment. And we've, for now, years been issuing the long life, some people call them ten-year, now they're going back to long life because, you know, ten years is not an exact figure. And again, number of second grade students receiving fire safety education in the Oklahoma City limits, a little over fifty-eight hundred to date, again, I think the number is actually sixty-eight hundred, and I think we'll get there by the end of the school year. Accomplishments within the fire prevention services division. We established Project Life, five oh one C three endowment with the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. Again, this is our, our Project Life, which is our smoke alarm program, and we, from time to time, receive donations. As you see there at the, the very bottom note there on that slide, we conducted our second annual Project Life five K fun run. That continues to grow in, in, in the second year, and again, we're going to have to have an even bigger venue for the next one. And to date, that fund has about twenty-five thousand, a little over twenty-five thousand dollars in it, and that is specifically for our smoke alarm program. We expanded the department's social media presence significantly through our public education staff, we currently have followers in ten different countries, so a lot of activity there. Again, we're doing some very good things on Facebook and Twitter, and, and this past year produced a series of YouTube videos which, again, promoted our public safety and, and fire safety education message. Under support services, that deputy chief position is currently vacant, probably maybe by the end of the day, I might have some news about that, but we're conducting that process, again, to replace some retiring chiefs. Fire maintenance services is under support services, again, that includes fleet and facilities, with a total budget of eleven point two million and seventeen employees. Fire dispatch, two point two million and nineteen employees, with a total budget of thirteen point four million and thirty-six employees. Our performance measures in support services is the percentage of nine-one-one telephone calls answered within fifteen seconds or less from transfer to fire dispatch, we're currently at ninety-one percent, our target is at ninety, so we're right on target there. Percentage of fire dispatch or incidents dispatched within one minute is at sixty-eight percent, and could probably do a little bit better at that. Total fire department incidents dispatched currently for the fiscal year, sixty-nine point, sixty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-three. Our percentage of hours that our frontline fleet is available is ninety-one percent, so we're doing very well in that area. Percentage of total maintenance hours that are unscheduled is thirty-three percent, so we want that to be a lower number. And percentage of repairs outsourced is at six percent, and that's really just some of the more, more involved issues such as engine replacement, transmission, tire maintenance, so forth. Some accomplishments in the support services division, we awarded a contract to Target Solutions to provide a web-based training throughout the department, a further attempt to try not to have people leave the, the station or the work site to attend required training in order to keep as many apparatus in service and keep those people working at the station as possible. We enhanced our radio capability to allow for direct communication between IMSA and FIRE on emergency medical services incidents, so we have direct radio communication now. We dispatch emergency medical incidents on DIS, IMSA's channel. We are in the process of putting in or implementing an electronic fuel management pro, project to totally get away from paper record keeping. We're the only department left in the city that, that maintains fuel records in that manner, so finally moving up with the, with the rest of the city. You see that rendition, the current rendition or depiction of the proposed station in the southeast part of the city, southeast hundred and sixty-fourth between Midwest and Douglas. Again, that project is still in the design phase, so again, that's just the, the latest rendering, I think that's probably going to be pretty much in the ballpark of what you're going to see. One thing I would point out, too, is that we're working with Public Works to try and be as economical as we can in our facilities projects, and that we'll also build a station very similar to that, Station Twenty-One at the Woodson Park area. So we hired one architect for two projects, and hopefully, the construction, we can get some economy there, too, by going that route, and so that, that, that is probably going to be very similar to what you'll see at Station Twenty-One, again, in the Woodson Park area. I wanted to also point out, in, in terms of our human resource work section, they conducted this past summer what we referred to as Camp Inferno, which was a weekend camp specifically targeted at young ladies, and to try and see what interest we could generate for, for young ladies in, in the fire service. And we did that in conjunction with Eastern Oklahoma County Technology Center, and, and fairly well attended, we hope to do it again and, and maybe grow it a little bit this next summer.
Chief, are you experiencing any, I'm sorry, are you experiencing any of the same issues with regard to recruiting that Chief City talked about, or are your applicant pool strong and?
Applicant pool's strong, I would say we average about forty to fifty applicants per month, we, we have two testing cycles per year. So we don't have any shortage of applicants, again, in terms of minorities, females, and so forth, that's still a challenge. And we're, we're very active in that way. I think in terms of female recruiting, the past two to three recruit academies, we, we're, we're making some progress there, and I'm pleased with that, but again, it's something we have to continually work at, and overall, probably not as satisfied as I would like to be. Under operational services, again, Deputy Chief Richard Kelly manages that division now. The total budget, again, this is the bulk of our, our employees and, and our operation of the department, a hundred and ten million and eight hundred ninety-three employees. It's basically broken down into, again, you're going to see the, the same number of employees, basically, and, but doing both of these functions here, suppression, fire suppression operations budget for that's nineteen point six million, a hundred and fifty-seven full-time employees. Emergency medical services, obviously, the lion's share of our responses budgeted at ninety point four million dollars and seven hundred and thirty-six employees. Performance measure in this division, the percentage of emergency medical incidents, responses under five minutes were at sixty percent. Our target is seventy. A percentage of emergency medical responses provided with advanced life support staff and equipment is eighty-nine percent, so you can see now, thirty-one of our engine company, our thirty-six engine companies are, have that ALS capability, the recruit class that started Friday, there are about nine people that are either paramedic or about to be paramedic, so hopefully, we can continue to add those ALS engine companies. But the bulk of our emergency medical response is being responded to by that higher level of, of personnel and equipment. Number of EMS responses total was forty-seven thousand six hundred. Percentage of fire incident responses under fire five minutes, fifty-six, again, our target is seventy there as well. Percentage of structured fires contained, contained to room of origin, seventy percent. And number of fire responses for this past year, twenty-six hundred and thirty. Some accomplishments in the operations division, we've recently placed thermal imaging cameras on every fire engine, every aerial ladder company, and every command vehicle in the city. So we have those on virtually every unit out there, and again, it's a great piece of technology to have. They make us a lot more efficient in terms of search and rescue, finding the seat of fire, and so forth, so, again, a very good technological advance for us. We replaced every self-contained breathing apparatus to comply with the most current NFPA standard. So they have the state-of-the-art equipment to protect our firefighters. We built a small training structure on our training, training ground, which allows us to provide a little bit more realistic fire ground scenarios along with search and rescue training. We also make, make it available. We also make it available to the police to do their tactical team training. So again, a little bit advanced in training. And we completed training and implemented a new standard operating procedure for structural firefighting tactics, which I think makes us a little bit more efficient, certainly makes us smarter about our approach to attacking fires. As I said, I wanted to go back to response times. And again, the target for our responses in seven minutes, all responses in seven minutes and firing EMS within five is 70. The discussion was a couple of months ago that I remember that maybe we should look at different areas of the city a little bit differently in terms of response time. So since that meeting and since that discussion, we've been working with IT. We'll be able, I think we'll be able to separate some of those areas in terms of locations that are more than five miles from the closest fire station and look at them a little bit differently. So maybe have a little bit more accurate and a little bit better picture of what our true, our response times are and not just a general for the entire city. And again, thank you very much for your continued support. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
The fleet replacement program that you discussed, are any of those vehicles fueled by CNG?
No, sir. All diesel and some are gasoline, but mostly diesel. Yes, sir.
Councilman, the city does do a number of CNG vehicle areas. We have General Fleet, our utilities have a lot of CNG fueled vehicles. We've got some buses in that area. The new buses for the rental facilities are going to be CNG vehicles. Almost all of our solid waste fleet has been, we have not penetrated the public safety market yet in CNG, nor has I think anyone in the country. I think that that's an area that has not, has not been accepted by...
Other than maybe some experimentation and testing and so forth, I don't see any real movement in the country anywhere to convert fire apparatus to compress natural gas.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I personally want to thank you for the response. The two hardest hit areas under the tornado were in my ward along I-35 and then a mile west of there at another mobile home park. And I've had nothing but great reports from the response of the fire department and the good work you guys did. And I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. It's a pretty challenging situation. Generally, a lot of times when the storm goes through, the rain goes with it, but the rains was still pouring down and firefighters and the police officers were out there with access issues and downed power lines and rain pouring down. And again, made pretty quick work of that area.
But I appreciate it very much. You know, I know other areas had a lot of problems with floods, but we had two areas hit very heavily by the tornado, so.
And we had a lot of those at the same time, citywide.
Right.
Yes, sir.
The, another comment I have concerning the new fire station that will come online this year is it has to do with, you know, some of the decisions that were made in putting that in, the 2007 bond issue, had to do more with fire protection. But with the way the emergency medical treatment has evolved over time, I think probably within the next few years, maybe the biggest impact's going to be on being able to get that first responder service to people. And I, and that, I think that's something that we, I'm very pleased about, that we may have been right for the wrong reason. But because of the extended times now in the rural areas for response by IMSA, the proximity of having those stations pushed further out into the more rural areas is going to be very important to us, I think, in terms of public health. And I just, I'm looking forward to seeing that thing open soon. I think the overall job that FIRE is doing is very, is commendable. I mean, just not just, not just in the areas of first response to medical emergencies, but the, in the areas of, or of the relocation of stations to the right location. I think just overall, you guys do a great job.
Thank you. I'm blessed to have a great staff, good, great firefighters, and again, blessed to have support from council and the community. That's what makes it work for us.
Any other comments from council? Seeing, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We have as our final item on our agenda for the Finance Committee, an opportunity for the public to make any comments, or anybody from the public. Seeing none, we'll adjourn the Finance Committee, reconvene the council meeting. Items from council. James, you want to start?
Just one more word about, Jim, I appreciate your efforts on that bill. Tell me one more time, Senate Bill?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. I mean, I just, I feel like if the vote was 88 to four, there needs to be some education of the impacts to the city, not necessarily that...
I think that effort's going on. There's multiple lobbyists working on it. There was the headline story this morning that I thought was pretty good. And then there was also an article by Steve Lackey in the paper that I thought shed some light on the issues out there. But I think education's an important component. You know, we're doing what we can at this point in time.
I think it's clear, I mean, when, when we're looking at variables on convention center business, I mean, we can disagree about hotels and things like that, but hopefully we agree that legislatures can be an impediment to trying to grow that business. We've seen that in Indianapolis and the back, or Indiana and the backlash they got this year, Arizona, et cetera. And our legislature seems especially prone to stepping on its foot and creating national backlash. So as we consider certain variables like the number of direct flights to Oklahoma City, et cetera, I hope we consider the behavior of our legislature. Thanks.
A couple of things. Yesterday afternoon, I attended a celebration at Bodine Grade School, celebrating the fact that over the last several months, they've received a substantial grant from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. They've also received a grant from Devon. They've also received funding from Republic Services that operates the landfill south of them. They have a very dynamic principal out there, and I think they certainly, they're doing a really good job. They have a, the school is a very vibrant place and they're, they're just doing an excellent job. And it was really nice to be invited to that ceremony. The other thing, I just, I have a comment about the negotiations that concerning FIRE and the insurance. You know, three years ago, the city asked the FIRE Union to consider coming back to our system. And this year, they've indicated they would like to do that, or they'd certainly like to look at it. I think they, there's a, there's a feature of their insurance plan that we probably should look at. And it has to do with a fund that they've established to be, to util, to perhaps diminish the impact of health insurance on retirees. It's, it's a fund that somewhat, is somewhat sustained by voluntary premium payments on the part of their folks. It has, it has other sources of revenue also. But I think, I don't know how that would work in a municipal sense, but it seems to me that if it could be done voluntarily, where people could voluntarily decide to contribute something to the, to their personal insurance while they're working, while they're making a good salary, to defray the impact of it when their salaries are stagnant in retirement, it just might be worth looking into. I think it's a good idea, and I recognize it may be the big impediment in bringing them back in at this point, because we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with that fund that they have that's for that purpose. But it would seem to me, one of the ways to look at it would be to look at it as, as a possibility. I, I can't ever look out here and see George Finer without realizing the impact that has on retired people. And especially the longer they're retired, the more the impact is on people. And so if they could make a contribution, almost like a retirement insurance premium savings account during their high earning years, it might just be, at least mitigate the future cost of it. I, I know from looking into it that the salaries that were paid to all city employees prior to, say, 93 or in that area, were so small, their retirements are based on what they earned and they, and where people are living longer. Now, now they're having to pay today's premiums based on retirements that were earned prior to the mid 90s. And it's almost impossible to figure out how to do that. And so it just, I just would like for us to really, not only in consideration of trying to work it out with the FIRE Union to bring them back under our policy, but work it, look at it for, if it could be done for all city employees, if there's a way to do it. Could be voluntary, where if you didn't contribute, you didn't, you had a different premium for those that contributed and those that didn't. It's a, it's a sticky wicket, I think, but it's certainly worth looking into. Thank you.
David?
Yes, just, I just want to let everybody know that the Urban Land Institute is having a workshop this weekend, starting Friday morning, breakfast at the Ambassador Hotel, talking about the issues that we've all talked about around this horseshoe, walkability and safe streets. And I think it's going to be a great program and run throughout the whole weekend.
Thank you, Meg. John?
Just briefly, I want to thank the city manager for the Cole Hargrave report that we received last week. I know not too many people get excited about solid waste, but when you have a 93 percent satisfaction rate for our current services, I think that is incredible. And I would like to specifically thank and applaud Jim Lynn and his staff for the great job that they do. I'd also like to mention, I was very encouraged by our sales tax revenue for May, and I was wondering, it improved from April, what we saw in April. I was wondering if you could relate that to any specific cause.
You know, Doug's here. We talked about that actually yesterday. It's, it stabilizes, you know, we're 11 months through the year and we're pretty close to target. And so it generally validates the numbers that we're going forward in the budget. And we're taking this year's collections, which appear to be very close to what our target will be. And again, we've projected that ahead at a 1.95 percent so, or increase on the sales tax. And, you know, we were a little nervous after April. This, I think, has just, it's just simply validated the numbers that we have and the numbers that we're going forward with. Doug, want to add to that?
Our Treasury Division gets the detail from the Oklahoma Tax Commission on what makes up that check, but it usually takes about a week or 10 days after we receive the check for them to get that detail. So we haven't had a chance yet to analyze what made up the growth in that. They'll, they'll be looking at that, and that's what makes up that sales tax report that'll come probably towards the end of this month, 1st of June there.
And the last thing I want to mention, the last week I attended the Summerfield Homeowners Association Annual Meeting in a pouring rainfall. They had a quorum and they were a very engaging group and very committed to their association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. City Manager's report.
I just want to mention a little bit about the rains we've had over, over the last week or so. It has had a significant impact on our lakes. If we started our, in the southwestern part of the lakes right now, McGee Creek Reservoir is 17 feet into the flood pool. And so that water will be going off. And we don't control that water. That's actually not our water. It's there for flood protection purposes. So the core will release that, but we will be at the, you know, whenever they release it, we'll still have McGee Creek full up to the conservation pool. Because it's a dual process and there are flood control purposes of McGee Creek. Lake Atoka down in the southeastern part of the state is four feet above its full level. And that is not a flood control facility, but there's no way to store the water in Atoka. It just has a weir, a concrete wall, if you will, a flat vertical wall or horizontal wall, that the, the water just, just goes over. So it'll on its own go out till it gets down to its, its full level. But again, those two reservoirs will be full going into the summer. And then Lake Draper, Councilman White and I talked yesterday, we're not sure that we can get another drop of water in Lake Draper. It's as full as either of us have recalled forever. So essentially, all three of the southeast reservoirs are full. Moving to the northwest reservoirs, Lake Overholsters is just a little over a foot from being full. Lake Hefner has gone from being down about 11 feet to right now, it's a little under four and a half feet from being full at this point in time. There's still water going into Lake Hefner and of course forecast for some rain in that kind of area for tomorrow, an inch or two in that area, so that could hopefully keep that flow going. Hopefully we'll be able to pick up a foot to maybe even three more feet into Lake Hefner before the week, the next week's over. Lake Canton's another story. With all the rains and the rainfall that we've had out there, Lake Canton has only increased its position by four inches. And they're just, you know, they've had some drought conditions out there and it's, so it's still down about 11 percent at this time. That being said, we're going into the summer in a pretty good shape. We were at about 50 percent of our reservoir capacity in January. We're up in the, in the upper 70s at, I think, at this point in time. And we've got about a two-point, I just looked at the number, 2.3 year supply of water in our reservoirs at this point in time. So it's been a solid recovery. That being said, we still need to use our water wisely. So, yes, sir.
It's also had a really significant impact on our streets, on our river, on the Boathouse District.
No, there's all kinds of things. They've lost a couple of docks down at the Boathouse District. One ended up down on 23rd Street, one ended up down on 36th Street. A boat was stranded down there. We've had several roads that are still shut down, intersections because of some washouts. We lost several traffic signals, and they're still not all up at this point in time, although we're getting them back up. Some of those are because of lack of electricity in areas. So they're not our issues, but we're working toward bringing those back up. And of course, that much rain really has an impact on the potholes. We'll be fighting that for, for months and months to come.
Do you have a theory, Jim, of what's, is there something with Canton Lake that's structural? And why isn't the rise correlating with the amount of rain they're getting?
Mr. White has a theory.
I'm not sure that you can scientifically justify it, but it seems to me that over the last several years, there's been such an abuse of underground water in northwest Oklahoma. They've used far and away in excess of what the recharge rate is in the aquifer. And I think the aquifer's recharging itself. I don't think it's, that just, again, that's kind of a layman's scientific view of it, but I think there's some scientific evidence that that's so.
I would agree that's impacted. It goes back to why is there no water in Lake Optima? And I think, you know, you take a look at when Optima was, Optima was up in the Panhandle on the North Canadian River, built in the 60s or 70s, and it's never had water in it. And it's because the hydrological studies, the rainfall hasn't changed. The hydrological flow into the North Canadian River has changed over those years. And the only logical correlation is because of the amount of center pivot irrigation that's going on out in western Oklahoma, western Kansas, eastern Colorado and in the Panhandle of Texas.
For farming or agriculture or what?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Couch. We're now to the point, citizens to be heard. Any citizens signed up?
No.
All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.